We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This clerk will call, please call the rule.
Chairman Davenport?
Excuse.
Excused.
Vice Chairman Horns?
Excused.
Commissioner Truesdale?
Present.
Commissioner Evans?
Present.
Commissioner Simon?
Present.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
Present.
Commissioner Dunham?
Present. Thank you. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting laws. We are live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Very pleased to stand for pleasure allegiance. What I'd like to have Commissioner Dunham introduce our guests here this evening. Good, now I'm going to have to remember all these names, and I'm not really good at it. To my left is my daughter Riley, and to my right is her friend Kiana, and again to my left is Karina, and Taylor, and Breton, and Christian, and Commissioner Trowbridge, Commissioner Steinman, Evans, and Truesdale. These kids are here tonight working on their civics project in school, and they'll be with us for about an hour, and I hope everybody will help us along with them tonight. Thank you. That we welcome. Can we do the housekeeping items?
Okay, Item 23, 24, and 25, GPA 24210, ZON 24209, and SDR 24211. Applicants requested advance until November 29. Items 27 and 28, VAR 23547 and SDR 23545, applicants requested advance until November 29. Items 32, 33, and 34, GPA 24477, ZON 24478, and SDR 24479, applicants requested advance until December 6. Item 35, GPA 24484, applicants requested advance until November 29. Items 36, 37, 38, 39, GPA 24489, ZON 24491, SUP 24884, SDR 24490, applicants requested advance until November 29. Items 44, 45, and 46, VAR 24532, VAR 24872, and SDR 24531, applicants requested advance until November 29. And the last item is Item 49, SUP 24305, applicants requested advance until November 29.
Is there any other items that, any other requests? Yeah, this is a public hearing, please go forward.
Evening Commissioners, Paul Hoffman, Moran Law Firm, 630 South Fourth Street, Las Vegas. On behalf of applicant Donna De La Cruz, Items 29 and 30, we would respectfully request that those items be held until the next Planning Commission meeting. We are still working on some of the neighbors and members of the commission, and furthermore, Mr. Moran is out of the jurisdiction, so we would request that this be held until the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items that anybody would like to have?
Commissioner, I called planning this afternoon at 4:30 precisely, and they told me that Items 32, 33, and 34 were still on the agenda and going to proceed as planned. And then we come all the way over here with all the neighbors, and it's been abated. How can that happen?
It hasn't been abated yet, and what we will do is, even if we do vote to obey it, for the people that come here will make a record in their behalf.
Can we speak?
Yes.
So we'll wait then.
Yes.
Thank you.
Please, thank you. Any other comments? I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, can we get an explanation of the, once again, for the holding or the request to hold Items 32 and 33 and 34? Were they held prior, and how many times is this being held, and is the staff okay with that abeyance?
They're requesting abeyance in order to revise the plans. We received the abeyance request at 4:15 today.
Is there any way that we can ensure that this doesn't occur, where people take time out of their lives and arrange for babysitters and drive down here in rush hour traffic, only to be told that the item will not be heard?
Commissioner Evans, let's see applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Tony Celeste, address is 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway, here on behalf of the applicant. I do apologize to the neighbors who did come down here for this hearing. We, as staff has said, we are making some alterations to the plans, which resulted in the hold. I know there was a neighborhood meeting held that was prior to our involvement. Unfortunately, we did not have those neighbors' names or addresses or phone numbers to contact them to let them know that we were going to be holding this. At this time, I would like to have an opportunity to speak with the neighbors, get their names and phone numbers, and we anticipate going forward with this matter on December 6, as the date we've held it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Celeste, do you anticipate having another neighborhood meeting with these people?
We do. We are hopefully going to have it on November 26. That's not set yet in concrete, but we are going to go through the city's process of mailing out notices in a timely fashion, and we are going to be having a neighborhood meeting prior to the December 6.
Would you see that I get notice of that meeting, please?
You would like, yes, absolutely.
Please, thank you. What I'd like to do at this time is take care of our housekeeping items, and then what we would do is, you know, on the other part of our agenda is open this up and let the people, since there's a significant number of people, let them make a brief record, because the fact that they did come down here is important.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve all the items that have been requested for abeyance by staff and by counsel who came to the podium.
All righty.
Would that be except 32 through 34 that you'll be taking testimony on?
Yes.
No, will you, if I may?
We're only making testimony. Testimony only.
Right, but so any action to obey would be after the testimony?
After, my apology.
I guess I may need to chime in on this, but if they're revising the plan, the testimony they're going to be having today will be on the old plan and not on the new plan, so the neighbors may want to consider that if they want to speak tonight.
And that's, but I think because of the significant number and the issues, if there's some people that may not be able to make it back, and they feel strongly at least to have their issues heard, maybe that will reflect, or that probably will reflect in some of the plan revisions.
Okay.
So there's a motion to handle the housekeeping items. Any other comments? Please catch your vote. And that is approved. This time, we have a motion for the minutes for the September 27th Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the September 7th Planning Commission minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be abstaining as I was excused at that meeting.
Thank you.
And I will also have to abstain.
Just to clarify, that is the September 27th.
Correction, September 27th in the motion.
Okay, all those in?
I'm all right.
Okay, please vote. And that is approved with the abeyance of Commissioner Evans. Now we're going to go to our one motion, one vote, or, excuse me, our consent items. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or applicant so desires. Our consent items are Item 1, TMP 23570, Tropical and Low Sea, applicant Tanny Engineering.
Those will need to be read. Those will need to be read until the one, motion one vote items.
Okay. Item 7, 8, 9, and 10 as well on the consent items. There's no items to be withheld or discussed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to follow the recommendation of the staff on our consent items as written to the record. Motion for approval.
Please catch your vote. And that is approved. Item 6 is final action. Actually, 7, 8, 9, and 10 are all final action. Now we go one item, one motion, one vote. The following are items that may be considered in one motion and one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearing and non-public hearing items will be opened at one time. Any person representing an applicant, application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Our one motion, one vote items is 11, SDR 24262, applicant owner Gilermo and Renee Aralano, for the conversion of a 1,400 square foot, single-family residence to an office at 10 Sacramento Drive. Item 12, GPA 2441, applicant owner City of Las Vegas, from M, medium-density residential to H, high-density residential, on the south side of Owens Avenue, approximately 840 feet west of Main Street. Companion item, ZON 24442, from RMHP Residential Mobile Home Manufactured, Home Park, to R5 Apartment. Item 14, GPA 24534, applicant Las Vegas Valley Water District, owner United States of America, from L, low-density residential, to PF Public Facilities at the northwest corner of Fort Apache Road and Centennial Parkway. And companion item, ZON 24536, from U, undeveloped to low-density residential, general plan designation to CV Civic. Item 16, RQR 24331, applicant Lamar Outdoor Advertising, owner Limkin 1992 Trust, request two-year review for an approved special use permit, U10402, allowed a 40-foot-tall, 14-by-48-foot off-premise advertising billboard sign at 1501 Western Avenue. Item 17, RQR 24404, applicant Las Vegas Billboards, owner Fong Imperial Plaza Limited Partnership, required one-year review of an approved special use permit, SUP 3061, which is allowed a 40-foot-tall, 12-foot-by-24-foot off-premise advertising billboard sign at 1571 North Decatur Boulevard. Item 18, SUP 24525, applicant MJ Christensen Jewelers LLC, owner MJ Christensen Jewelers Holdings LLC, for a second-hand dealer use in an existing jewelry store, new, at 8980 West Charleston Boulevard. Item 19, VAC 24407, applicant owner Church of, Church Christian First, petition to vacate an existing 30-foot-wide portion of right-of-way on the west side of Tonopah Drive, and 10-foot-wide portion of right-of-way on the south side of Mesquite Avenue, generally located east of Rancho. And Item 20, SDR 24452, applicant owner City of Las Vegas, for a public park on 10 acres at the southwest corner of Iron Mountain Road and Fort Apache.
Mr. Chairman, staff has items to be brought off, one motion, one vote. First, Item 11, SDR 24262, actually, we should have brought this up during housekeeping, but the applicant's representative is out of the country and has had trouble getting back, and he's been unable to get to a fax machine, but he did call us this morning, and he's requesting abeyance on Item 11 until November 8. Item 18, SUP 24525, and Item 19, VAC 24407, staff has not received confirmation from the representatives for those items that they accept the conditions proposed by staff. Therefore, we'd like to have those two items pulled off, one motion, one vote.
Okay, are there any other items that anybody wishes to have pulled off? This is a public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on these items, please come forward.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Top Flo, 240 North 19th Street. On Numbers 16 and 17, have structural engineers looked at these, and the other question is, have they been keeping these up real nice? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the recommendations are for approval.
Thank you.
On Number 18, I'm here to represent MJ Christensen Jewelers, and we do accept the conditions on that.
Thank you. Do you name for the record, please?
I'm sorry, Rusty Miller.
Thank you.
So does that leave us with only 19?
Good evening Commissioners, Victor Rodriguez, 3111 South Valley View, representing Number 19, excuse me. We concur with staff's conditions on.
Just, there was a clerical error in the paperwork, didn't it, Brad?
Okay. There's nothing special going on, so.
Thank you. So at this point, only Item 11 will be pulled off the one motion, one vote. Can we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept staff's recommendation regarding Items Number 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20, subject to staff conditions.
Okay, there are no other comments? Please catch your vote. And that is approved, and.
And all items go forward to City Council on November 21st. One clerical correction on Item 17, that is in Ward 5, Barlow, and I'm sorry, Item 20 is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days to the City Court's Office.
Okay, and now, there has been a request to hold or obey Item 11 for?
Two weeks? November 8.
November 8. If there are any other comments?
Make a motion to hold Item Number 11 for two weeks.
Thank you. Please catch your vote. And that is approved. Thank you. Now we go to our public hearing items. Item 21, GPA 2423, applicant owner City of Las Vegas, request to adopt and update public building element and revise the 2020 master plan.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we have three master plan elements here before you this evening. I bring with me Ms. Valerie Swalehi, who is a new planning supervisor with the Planning and Development Department. Valerie has been with us since June, and she has been the person who has been responsible for shepherding three documents through the process and working with our staff members to make corrections and additions to these documents. We have a very brief PowerPoint presentation that Valerie will walk you through this evening, and then also, we passed out three addenda to you for each of the elements. They represent the comments that were made by other departments about these, and Valerie will also give you a brief presentation of what's contained therein. I should note for the record that the addenda that we have passed out to you do not change the substantive recommendations of any of the elements, but rather are primarily corrections to the language and some of the information contained within the documents themselves. With that, I'll turn it over to Valerie.
And, Mr. Chairman, before you begin, I think we need to open all three elements of the general plan for the public hearing purposes for this presentation.
Okay, then.
That's Item 21, 22, and 26.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and open up Item 22, GPA 24206, applicant owner City of Las Vegas, request to adopt an update Parks element and revise the 2020 master plan. And Item 26, GPA 24236, applicant owner City of Las Vegas, request to adopt and update Transit element and revise the 2020 master plan. Good evening.
Yes.
Good evening. I'm very happy to be here this evening, my first time to appear before the Planning Commission, and we're happy to have these three elements before you. The first one we'll look at is the Parks and Recreation element. Next slide, please. The Parks element, you note that we have changed the name from Parks to Parks and Recreation in this update. The Parks element was originally adopted March 2000. This update builds on previous plans, measures progress, and sets new priorities. To measure our progress, we, next slide, please. How are we doing since 2000? The city has increased park space from 1.1 acres to 3 acres per 1,000 residents, and this exceeds the goal of 2.5 acres per 1,000 residents that was established in the park element in 2000. Could you go back to the previous slide, please? The bad news is, despite this increase in overall service, 44% of the city's residents do not live within walking distance of a neighborhood park, and walking distance is defined as a half a mile. Next slide, please. The key recommendations in this update are to build neighborhoods, neighborhood parks in dense, chronically underserved areas, and by that we mean areas with the highest population density and neighborhoods that have been there the longest period of time. The second recommendation is to connect Parks Planning to the Capital Improvements Program. Third is to build recreation amenities to keep pace with growth, and the fourth is to implement urban pathways in lieu of green spaces in the urban core. Next slide, please. The second element that we're looking at this evening is the Public Buildings element, and this will be the first time this element has come forward. The goals of this element are to identify inventory and assess public buildings in accordance with Nevada state law, and to analyze and forecast future facility and space needs. Next slide, please. The intent of this element is to guide the long-range planning of public buildings, to identify proposed public facilities, and describe the various considerations that go into planning a public building, and to provide information to be integrated with the city's strategic and capital improvement plans. Next slide, please. The key recommendations in the Public Buildings element are to provide adequate public buildings and facilities to meet the needs of a growing population, to promote and foster arts and culture within the city, and to provide clean and safe facilities for detention and enforcement staff, criminal offenders, and the general public. Next slide, please. To strive toward meeting fire and rescue department response time goals and maintain the ISO Class 1 certification, to maintain police response time goals as development and population growth occurs by strategically constructing new stations, and to strive to design all future public buildings and facilities to U.S. Green Building Council's LEED Silver Level or other equivalent, and further the city's sustainability goals. Next slide, please. The third element for you to consider this evening is the Transit element. This element provides a comprehensive analysis of transit systems and amenities in the city, and it's to be used as a guide for decision-makers when determining priorities and allocating resources for future projects. The key recommendations in the Transit element are to align plans, policies, and development codes to support mass public transportation, to continue to support and participate in transit project planning through committee membership. Next slide. To seek funding opportunities to assist with transit and amenity developments within the city of Las Vegas, to coordinate improvement of the design, availability, functionality, and passenger-friendliness of bus stop amenities, and to coordinate the planning and development of park and ride facilities. The public involvement process that we've utilized in working on these elements included three neighborhood meetings, and news release was published on the city's website inviting review and comment on the Planning and Development website. We even had set up an online comment form, and the element was also presented to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission earlier this month, and overall, their comments were very positive. And people can still contact us on our website, still up, and that's the link, if anyone is still interested in doing that. We'll quickly run through the addenda that were passed out earlier this evening. Overall, I'd like to say that the comments that we did receive from other city departments and other outside agencies such as RTC were very positive. People are very glad to see this kind of information being compiled all in one place. In the Parks and Recreation element, the majority of the comments were provided by the Leisure Services Department, and the first one, as you note, just clarifies the role of the Parks Advisory Commission, the fact that they are staffed by Leisure Services. Department of Detention and Enforcement requested we add their role in watching over our Parks and Recreation facilities. An update on projects that are underway is included. The description of the classification system that Leisure Services uses is included, and a new description of what a specialty use area is was added. Language was added describing the uniqueness of the Red Rock Canyon Conservation Area and what that adds to the potential for recreation experience for city residents. And a table that includes all of the Parks and Leisure Services facilities in the city with a lot of detail is included in the appendix, and that was updated. Corrections on, it wasn't Lorenzi Park, it's Ed Fountain Park, where a proposed community center is underway. New information was added about trends in healthy lifestyles and community design, provided to us by the Leisure Services Department. Small change about funding. A description from Leisure Services that talks about the factors that should be used in considering where to build new leisure facility centers is added, and that's fairly lengthy, as you see. And we were also instructed to not call swimming pools swimming pools anymore, but to call them aquatic facilities, and we have done that. Along with this, there were many, many new maps created and map corrections as part of this to help us identify where new centers should be built. Priorities were then added for centers based on the new mapping that was done to identify areas of deficiency throughout the city. The Public Buildings element, there really were no real substantive changes. There's an expanded description of the Office of Architectural Services Responsibility in public buildings, and also an expanded description of historic buildings and the value that they have to our community, and how we should continue to work toward preservation efforts, and that also ties into sustainability initiatives in the city. An expanded description of the West Las Vegas Art Center is included, various corrections to tables, just updating information that may have been outdated that we had included. And there's some newer information that's provided about the new City Hall facility and the new Development Services Center that's included as well, and information from Detention and Enforcement about their future building needs. The last addendum for the Transit element has very similar kinds of changes, and the majority of these were provided by the Regional Transportation Commission, and it's updating information that was a little bit out of date. And, for example, there are two funded park and ride facilities in the city that are currently underway, one at Durango and West Cliff, the second at Grand Montecito Parkway on Oso We did not know that when we first wrote it. Another interesting thing that we learned is that there's a new express service plan that's. that's tied to these park and ride facilities that will greatly enhance the transit opportunities that are currently available, and that information has been included as well.
That concludes our presentation on the elements, and we'll be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. These were posted as a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak on these items? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Commissioners, any comments?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions, if I may. The aspect of the GPA that discusses the Public Buildings element, does that have any thought or consideration for how we would acquire future sites for public buildings? Is that something that's within the scope of the document?
We don't really go into discussion about how we acquire sites, but rather we identify what the city's needs are.
I'm just thinking in terms of as we grow and as the Northwest expands, do we have projections for where we think public buildings might be needed? And specifically where I'm going with this is, when we build public buildings, particularly in the newer areas of the city, are we eligible or can we be eligible and have we been eligible for land acquisitions as the BLM releases land and through the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management?
Certainly, we are able to do that through the BLM leases, through the RPMP leases with the BLM. In terms of the newly growing areas, we certainly address that in terms of fire protection and then also police services, because those are two of the key issues where we have to have those particular services located in an area to serve residents. With other city facilities such as, you know, permitting offices and things like that, it's less important to have those in the newly developing areas. So we do address what is important in those areas, but also as a general whole, how much office space do we need to serve a growing population?
Thank you.
Commissioner Trubisky?
Yes, I would like to congratulate staff for an excellent document. I was particularly impressed that you included in Policy 2.4.2 reference to increased maintenance of the Parks facilities. That's typically a critical issue that gets lost. I also thought it did a marvelous job of developing service standards that were by sector within the city. That's an excellent approach, very forward-thinking. I would suggest a couple of areas that may need to be looked at, though, just briefly, and I'm getting real picky on you, but I'm an ex-Park and Rec Director, so give me a break here, and I look for the opportunity to get these shots in where I can. I think that the document would be further enhanced if there was some kind of a replacement schedule attached to the amenities that are included in parks so that the budget people could be apprised ahead of time when it's going to need to be—features are going to need to be replaced. I think that we would also improve the program or the plan somewhat by mentioning the coordinated development of—coordinated identification and development of parks with our neighbors, the county, Clark County, as well as the city of North Las Vegas, particularly when it comes to the use of funding derived from the Southern Nevada Public Lands Act. I think that 3.4, where it mentions public facilities, also would be better if it also mentioned specifically police facilities and other public facilities, just to include that language. And from a planning perspective, I think that we would be missing a golden opportunity if we didn't include someplace in this document the reference that higher-density zoning, however planners wanted to find that, should be tied to access to public parks which are within a half-mile. If you want the high density, let's—as we have the opportunity—tie it to accessibility to public parks. Having said that, like I said, I was getting real picky on you, but excellent job, and congratulations to you.
Certainly, we appreciate those comments.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Interesting observation, Commissioner Trubisky. I'm wondering, as you mentioned, the density tied to access to public parks, wouldn't it not be prudent to maybe consider density with respect to access to public transportation? Or is that something that is—does the one follow the other, or is it just completely consumer-driven?
No, certainly those two items are related, density and public transit, and we do have a transit-oriented development that will be coming forward, which will basically talk about that concept.
And then, in your PowerPoint presentation, you mentioned one of the deficiencies that we have 44% of our Las Vegas population that does not live within walking distance to a park facility. How do we correct that? And I'm assuming that if it were identified as an issue, that it's something that we have a need for. Any suggestions, or—the document simply identifies that as a fact. Any way that we can correct that?
One of our key recommendations is to focus our Parks construction, site acquisition and construction in the most densely populated areas. And by doing that, you're improving your ratio, that percentage. If you're getting where most of the people live and providing a park there, you're chipping away at that deficiency.
And out of curiosity, how do we, as the city of Las Vegas, compare to the other municipalities with regard to park space and access? Does anyone know?
If I may, I believe that the numbers, the gross numbers, can be had for comparison purposes, and as you saw on the first slide that Valerie had, that it showed that our park acreage per thousand persons had increased substantially, and I believe we do have the numbers for the other agencies on that.
Yes, we do, not on the top of my head.
And Valerie's office. But for us, more specifically, again, is the numbers of persons served within that half-mile radius, and I do not believe that we've seen that data for the other agencies.
No, we don't have that.
I'm just curious if we're all sort of—you know, if we all have the same challenges. It's not specific to any one particular community.
Yes, we do. I might add that the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition in their regional policy document does identify the goal for all of the jurisdictions within the valley of 2.5 acres per 1,000 residents. So it's a goal that we all share among all of the agencies here in the valley.
Commissioner Steinman?
The specific mention is made of Kyle Canyon, that area. Why was that specifically put in there? And then, why do you state that the planned growth for Kyle Canyon is not to be in direct competition with, for example, downtown growth? What is—
Which element are you in there, Mr. Steinman?
Well, I'm on a report. I'm on the report we have, on the Parks report, Parks Element, and I'm on page six under Policy 3.4.2. And the sentence says, "The growth plan for Kyle Canyon area should not be in direct competition with any undeveloped portions of Town Center and direct competition with downtown growth should also be considered." Tell me the relationship between downtown growth and Kyle Canyon.
The need is really to consider the areas individually in terms of the adopted plans for each of those areas. The downtown has the downtown centennial plan, Kyle Canyon has its own development standards, as does Town Center. So in terms of those three different areas, we need to consider them individually in terms of the needs and service.
If you take the park on Summerlin Parkway, now, there's no mention of that because that's completed, and there'll be no more in that area. So there's no more park element that is involved with the tennis center and that across the street to the west.
By no more development.
By no more park development in that area? Is that why that's not specifically mentioned as an area? Ward four, if you will, okay, that kind of—and Ward two. They're not mentioned here. So my question is, why do you mention downtown in relationship to Kyle Canyon? I don't understand the competition issue.
I'm looking to Valerie, if you can offer any assistance there.
I believe this policy is one that—it's not a new policy that we've created with this update of the Parks element. I believe it's a policy that comes directly out of the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan.
Well, it says newly developing areas. It's under that section of the write-up.
That language was used also in the 2020 Master Plan. But let us take a look. I certainly—Chairman, and I concur, Commissioner Steinman, that that sentence needs to be clarified, if nothing else. So let us make a note of that, because I think that is a very good point, and we need to look into that regardless of if it's new or an existing sentence.
Correct, yes, thank you.
Part of that point, just when you talk about newly developing areas, we've got a blank canvas. We can build parks into those master plans, and too often, the newer areas—the perception is a disproportionate growth in parks that does miss the downtown area, which I think is part of your presentation with regards to those higher-density areas, some of the areas that aren't underserved, that are underserved.
Well, some of the neighborhoods have been there for 50 years.
Right.
Or better, and that's what the chronically underserved, where the most people live issue, and how do we address that?
But haven't we gotten smarter, and we're—the developer at Kyle Canyon is going to do all the parks?
Yeah.
Correct, yeah. So it's not being funded by the city.
It's an excellent catch. Let us take a note of that.
One other question—or one other comment with regards to the public building process, you know, I really appreciate the sustainability references and the fact that we are looking at our future and trying to save our future in that regard. But I read through here, and I may have missed it, but it seems to me that we're going to talk about our public buildings. We really need to talk about how we can show our—how great our city is. I mean, some of our public buildings historically have been our lesser effort architecturally, and I hope that is addressed somewhere in here going forward, because I think public buildings, public facilities are where a community has the opportunity to show its commitment to design and those elements, similar to what the Springs Reserve has done and some of the others. Too often, the only time you hear about creative architecture in Las Vegas is, you know, what did wind do today? You know, I mean, we have a chance to build a new city, you know, some new public facilities. The other part is, there's—I believe that there needs to be a direct correlation between our public facilities and our transportation, our transit-oriented. We have public employees, we have access issues for our community. If we want to really show that transportation is—or mass transit is an opportunity in the future in a sustainable community, we have to set the stage where we can show people by our own actions. I mean, we're—you know, right now, so many of the facilities, people drive to work, then they get a public vehicle, and they head back out to almost the same area where they live, and the cost of fuel, the cost of our community, we need to be better at that. And I think that's an opportunity where these two elements need to come together in the future. So if there are any other comments, if not, motion. We'll take these one at a time.
I would like to make a motion in regards to item number 21, which is the General Plan Amendment 24-203. Recommend approval, so we tell staff conditions, which are none.
And that's with the addendums?
With the addendums, certainly.
Okay. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is approved.
In regards to item number 22, General Plan Amendment 24-206, I'd like to make a recommendation for approval as submitted with all addendums.
Any other comments, please cast your vote. And that is approved.
And in regards to item number 26, General Plan Amendment 24-236, I'd like to make a recommendation for approval as presented with all addendums.
And please cast your vote. And that is approved. All of these items will go on to City Council on 11/21, and if there's any—the community that feels there's some additional comments, the planning staff would be glad to hear from you.
Go forward.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to open up items 32, 33, and 34. Item 32, GPA 24477, General Plan Amendment, public hearing. Applicant owner, Michael Village LLC, requests to amend a portion of the Southwest Sector Plan of the—of the general plan from low-density residential to SC service commercial on 1.96 acres at the southwest corner of Lake Mead Boulevard and Michael Way. Companion item ZON 24478, rezoning related to GPA 24477. Same applicant, same owner, request for rezoning from RE Residential Estates under resolution of intent to RPD 4, residence plan development 4 units per acre to C1, limited commercial on 1.96 acres on southwest corner of Lake Mead, Michael Way. And item 34, SDR 24479, site development plan review related to GPA 24477 and ZON 24478. Same applicant, same owner, request for site development plan review for 15,400 square foot single-story general retail development with waiver to allow a three-foot wide landscape buffer along the—along a 15-foot portion of the southern perimeter where 10-feet-wide buffer is required, and a 10-foot wide landscape buffer along the 20-foot portion of the eastern perimeter where 15-foot landscaping buffer is required.
Applicant has requested this item be held in the bans until the December 6th meeting. Staff is recommending denial, as we find that it constitutes a spot zoning and is not compatible with the surrounding area.
And right, at this point, I think we're going to take—unless you wish to make a brief statement, I think we were going to open up the public hearing and address the issue, at least some of the comments, as it relates to whether we would hold this item.
That would be fine. I would just like to offer that I'll be in the back to get everyone's name, numbers, email addresses, be sure that they are contacted when we do have our next neighborhood meeting prior to the planning commission hearing, and we'll be sure that Commissioner Dunham is invited to that meeting and anyone else who would like to attend.
Okay, thank you. This was advertised as a public hearing. Is anybody here wishing to speak on that item?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is David Clark. I live at 4950 Sawyer Avenue, for the record. That is one street north of Lake Mead and Michael. The rezon application in issue. One of the problems that the neighbors of Curtis Park have, Curtis Park Manor, is that planning requires applicants to send notices only for a 1,000-foot radius. That—these are half-acre lots, and so that's about three houses. That's about 12 houses, 360 degrees around. So what ends up happening, one neighbor hears about it and then calls another neighbor, and then pretty soon, everybody has to form a neighborhood meeting. This is the third meeting in one year—pardon me, the third—the third time Curtis Park has had to organize and collect in one year, the second since March, to try to stave off an encroachment upon our neighborhood. We'd like it to be on the record that the neighbors firmly opposed this rezon attempt. Then there are three primary reasons. These are residential estates, single-family residents. The applicant wishes to change this to commercial. That's at the corner of Michael and Lake Mead. One of the biggest problems—if you're familiar with Jones Avenue between Alta and Charleston, I've lived here 30 years—that is now an alternating collection of proprietorships and rundown houses. It wasn't like that 30 years ago. We fear and feel— We fear and feel that this rezon is successful will trigger future rezones. The immediate effect of that is plummeting property values. No one will move in next to a business, a payday loan store, or a cafe, or a retail The other immediate problem is we have a lot of cut-through traffic down Leonard and Michael Way and a lot of trash. If a commercial building is allowed to be rezoned there, we feel that will exacerbate that traffic. Traffic crosses from Michael Way down all the finger side streets. So there's no reason, there's no good reason why this rezon should be approved. As you said, staff has recommended against it. We've had to fight a pawn shop, we've had to fight an owner that tried to rezon his house so it could be used as a car rental, a storage place, and now we have to fight this. It's exhausting for the neighbors because it's so easy for an applicant to put in an application, have a lawyer, but it's the neighbors that have to collect and try to fight it and make good arguments for it. There are so many organizations in Clark County and the city that encourage neighborhoods to keep up their neighborhoods, to have pride of ownership and keep them intact. We need your help. We can't do it alone. We can't have an applicant, an applicant every three months come and want to rezon in our neighborhood. At any rate, there are several neighbors here, I would like, is it all right if they speak? I'm not actually representing them. I'm one neighbor out of 250 households.
If anybody else wishing to speak that felt they were, they needed to go on the record and won't be able to come back when this is brought back before us, if it's held?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. My name is Ron Astbury. I've lived in Las Vegas for 35 years. Thank you very much.
Can we have an address from, your address?
4923 Sawyer Avenue. I concur with everything that Mr. Clark just said. We are neighbors. Now, I'll say something right now. I'm very fond of the fact that you've allowed the younger people to come in, and that's one of our concerns. Because of all this extra traffic, with all this breaking down of commercial versus residential, and the commercial activity, more and more traffic coming in, the younger people are at great risk, and we don't have the type of enforcement, unfortunately, due to our great, great growth and expansion presently, to make sure that everybody is in a safety mode. So that's a great concern of ours. I'd like to say also that, at being here for 35 years, I realize that we're looking at unprecedented growth. We've got over 6,000 people every month moving in, and I'd like to keep Las Vegas at least as it was in my mind, and I do concur with what the Commissioner had said before about architecture in town. I know that fire stations, especially to me, are very special, probably some of the best in the entire country. I'd also like to thank Commissioner Evans, who said that he was very concerned about the fact that there was such a belated stalling of the, of this, of the abeyance of this particular items, 32, 33, and 34. Mr. Clark mentioned that he called in at 4:30, supposedly the abeyance went in at 4:15. I think that in the future, certainly, there should be some type of parameter which allows the people that go out of their way to come to these meetings, that they at least would be informed that the, that the meeting was not going to take place, that it's going to be delayed to another time.
You're experiencing that opportunity.
That's what I'm trying to say. Something is happening today, I think, that is quite important to America. What was that, the World Series? That's right, that's on, and here we are. Well, anyway, thank you very much for your time, and I hope that you follow through with your initial appraisal of what's going on here relative to this property. And I think that the impact would be negative, and that I hope that it is denied.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Please come down, there's two microphones, and if it's, you know, if you're going to repeat, just please concur, and that way we can move this along and make sure we're being certain.
Okay, I would like to first of all say good evening. My name is Sean Butter. I live at 1930 North Michael Way, and I'm strongly opposed of 32, 33, and 34, and I don't know of any person that I'm aware of in the entire Ward 5, that's a tax-paying citizen and voting, that is interested in having any zoning changes or anything changed over there at all. Thank you.
I'm Catherine Scott, 5274 Sawyer Avenue. I'm a mother of young children about your age, and I very much am opposed to this. We need to preserve our neighborhood, also a long-time Nevada, and we need to think about the citizens. I work full-time, it makes it very hard for me to get here, and they hold the neighborhood meetings late, can't make it to the meetings, so I would like to be able to be heard without having to come forward at every meeting. It's very much impacting my life and my children's life. My son's at football practice, I can't be there. So, thank you.
Frank Bundler, 5079 Sawyer. I'd just like to ask if you could see if the people who are opposed could just stand up, see if you could see the number of people here. That is not everybody who wanted to be here. A lot of people could not make it, so I wanted to like just to mention that. Thank you, those are all opposed.
And Mr. Bundler, if everybody's standing, if you could, Mr. Celeste is here, he'd love to have your, your address, and make sure that you're notified on any, any actions that, you know, the developer is interested in presenting to you.
And also, Mr. Celeste referred to a neighbor meeting earlier, which I don't know if anyone is aware of that. One gentleman, Phil, lives right across the street from there, he was not aware of it at all. So as was mentioned earlier, the communication, we would like to see it expanded so that people are aware of something a little bit further, as I mentioned, the size of these states, and as well, just concurring again with having the abeyance, that things could be known, because I'm sure with how long they've been working on this, they knew before 4:15 today that they may want to have a delay on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, if also, I'll just leave this, some of the things we're trying to do to work within the, in the area, that's a newsletter that we have, that is being passed out in our neighborhood to try to help to keep the neighborhood solid and to keep it strong. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
My name is Ann McMillan, and I live at 5353 Sawyer. I have lived in my house since 1962, one of the originals. My comment about spot zoning is, I don't know how many people drive down Lake Mead east and west, but there is no green turn light that ever goes on to turn north or south on Michael Way. So there's a big congestion of traffic, certainly in the morning and in the evening during commuter routes. Also, along Michael Way, it's a one-way street each direction, and really narrows down as you cross Lake Mead going south on Michael Way. All right? And so that would be a big production as far as a problem, as far as putting any kind of commercial building in there with an access either off of Lake Mead or Michael Way, would be certainly prohibitive as far as the traffic goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Penya. I live at 4900 West Lake Mead Boulevard. I'd just bring it to your attention that we have three grocery stores within a one-mile radius of my house. I have seven convenience stores within a one-mile radius of my house. I collect garbage from all of them in the front yard of my house. I don't think we need that many. There's many mechanic shops that were, are within a one-mile radius and businesses, so it's kind of encroaching on, on where I'm raising my children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we are Steve and Nancy McLaughlin. We live at 5300 Sawyer. We've lived there 20 years, and we are against the zoning change.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say that we are already experiencing traffic that's cutting through, and we're very much opposed to having any more of that. They go through at about 40 miles an hour down residential street, and it frightens us to death. We don't need any more traffic in the area.
Thank you. My name is Deanne Stout. I live at 4949 Sawyer Avenue. I remember last time we were here to speak on you, with you, I believe it was Commissioner Stein, Steinem that we asked about a traffic study to see what the traffic impact would be when, in regards to a convenience store, a similar thing that's been placed on Lake Mead and Decatur. On the corner there, they did a, and we were concerned because they wanted the easement to go, to empty into Sawyer. At that time, so we have a similar strip mall building that's been zoned for that area and was supposed to be built and never built yet. So that's also in the plans. But I'm opposed to this, but I'm okay with it being postponed to December 6th because the group of people you see here that opposes it, it gives us more time to organize and more time to get more people here to oppose it, because I can guarantee you that no matter what type of changes they make, if it's something that doesn't fit into our community, into our lifestyle, and in maintaining an older neighborhood that has residential homes, that we choose to live there, stay there, and keep the integrity of that neighborhood, we will fight it. And so if they want more people, we will be happy with the December 6th meeting because we will double our people and maybe even more. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner David Johnson at 5430 Reader Avenue. I'm speaking against the approval of these, of 32, 33, and 34. I've lived at my home for 27 years. I love my neighborhood. It's clean, it's pristine, except for the traffic that's been mentioned and the trash that's been thrown in front of my home, too. But it is my honest and firm belief that, that your staff has appropriately reviewed all the technical information about this, and they're recommending that it be denied. I strongly hope that you will agree with that, and, and I hope that you will vote against it. Thank you much.
Thank you.
My name is Ethan Gardner. I live at 2184 Michael Way, and I want to say that I agree with everybody here that's opposed to this rezoning. Michael Way is routinely used as a cut-through street. People regularly go over 45. We rarely have enforcement. What we do, we try to congratulate them and say thank you. I'm constantly picking up broken bottles and trash in my front yard, and this would only increase, so thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. This will be our last speaker.
Good evening. My name is Philip Yeager, 5328 West Lake Mead Boulevard. I certainly agree with your staff that it's inappropriate. I would vote against it. Also, I haven't heard it mentioned, I went to the first meeting, the builder was, had at the golf course, and they haven't mentioned the drive-through lane at the large building. Apparently, there are two buildings, one of them being a smaller building, but it has a drive-through. I can only imagine McDonald's or something that's going to come up with paper cups and cigarettes, well, more cigarettes. West Lake Mead is noted for cigarettes on the sidewalks, but I'd definitely vote against it and feel the planning, your staff is correct.
Thank you. Mr. Celeste, I, you know, don't want to put you on the spot, but I, I do understand your request to have this held, and I'm not sure how the rest of the Commissioners feel. I think it's appropriate to hold this item for 30, until the December date, and you obviously have the tenor of the neighborhood, and you, and you have the ability to, to make sure these individuals are notified. So hopefully, however you proceed, it'll, it'll be inclusionary with, with everyone.
Yes, I appreciate that. We will not only go through the city avenues of providing the notification that way, but also all the names and addresses and phone numbers I collect this evening will also get that notification as well for the time and date and place of our neighborhood meeting prior to the December 6th, the planning commission hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
I would, I would concur, and if the proposal and the design is substantially different, of course, we'd need to come back and, and hear the, you know, the item in its entirety. And I was misunderstood, thinking that this had been abayed in the past, but I would concur with the Chairman, and if there's no discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion on these three items.
If you would for just a moment, I would like these homeowners necessarily to know that I'm highly sensitive to this area. This is where I delivered newspapers, so that tells you how long ago that was.
These are responsible for the papers on the street.
Right. I want you to think about something between now and the, the meeting that Mr. Celeste is going to hold, that as long as this property is vacant, you're going to see untold number of applications for things that I can't even dream up. As soon as something is built there, then you folks will have, will not have to come down here, at least on this piece of property. But you have to think of what you want, and, and what, if what you want is reasonable or not, you have to think, is an RE home there, or several RE homes reasonable there? If not, then what? Is it apartments? Is it condos, like what's, what's across the street? Or is it commercial? Or is it high-rise or whatever? But I want you to think of what you can do to compromise in whatever way, that as soon as something gets built there, you folks will have the ability to come to us and say, okay, we would like to see this, we would like to see this, and if this is approved, we would like to see this. But a flat no, we're going to be doing this every two weeks. So you need to think of what both parties can do constructively between now and the meeting, and now, and between when you come back before us.
No, we're, we're not going to debate the item any further. I think we, the item is before us to, to hold this item.
And my motion, and before I make the motion, my colleague over here, Breton, suggests that he thinks that additional houses should be built there, so I take that into consideration. My motion would be for an abeyance of agenda item number 32. Mr.
You can take them all.
City Attorney, I'll take them all, the GPA 32, the zoning 33, and the SDR, the site development review, agenda item number 34. My motion would be to obey these items all until.
December 6.
When?
December 6.
December the.
6.
December the 6th, planning commission meeting.
If there are any other comments, please cast your vote. And those are held till December 6th. Thank you, and thank everybody for coming down here. We're going to take a brief break right now. If everybody can take their seats and.
Item 31, abeyance, SUP 2423, 24243, special use permit, public hearing, applicant Gonzalo Esque, owner, ECT Holdings LLC, request for a special use permit to allow for beer and wine cooler off-sale at a proposed general retail store with a waiver to allow a distance separation from a city park of approximately 150 feet where 400 feet is required at this, at the southeast corner of Charleston Boulevard and Maryland Parkway.
Mr. Chairman, I, I refer you to the blue sheets tonight, which are green in this case. Page 3 has your special map in it, which indicates similar uses and protected uses for your reference. Staff finds that the proposed beer wine cooler off-sale is not compatible or harmonious with the park, nor the adjacent residential in this area, and is recommending denial.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I was just, you know, we wanted.
Okay, your name and address.
I'm sorry, Alejandro Maldonado, 2977 Harbor Cove Drive. And we wanted a waiver. The basis are, there is a, this is a supermarket, and there is a convenience store right across the street at the same distance of the park that sells wine, beer, same thing that we are asking for.
Thank you. This was advertised as a public hearing. Is there anybody here wishing to speak on this item? Please come forward.
I'm Sean Guidell, 1200 Franklin Avenue. You can call me Josh. Brought some pictures today. You guys might remember me from, from two weeks ago.
Don't you live just like to the east of the park, north and east of the park?
It took me three minutes to walk there.
Okay.
So, yeah, literally, I, if you're looking at Veterans. So, yeah, literally, I, if you're looking at Veterans Park, my property is immediately adjacent to the southeast corner.
Perfect.
So, actually, a point that I hadn't even, I thought to address, that the Lake Mead and Michael Way residents brought up was the abundance of trash associated with any kind of, like, commercial, even some types of retail development. We definitely have plenty of trash, as my backyard can attest to any time it gets windy. But that's not really the real reason why I would like to thank the commission for letting me speak tonight. The Hunt Ridge really does have a special place in the hearts of many residents. It is a great opportunity for that area to reestablish itself, and the proximity to the park, with consideration to mixed beer/wine liquor sales there, is not compatible. This is a picture of the structure as it currently sits. I don't know if there have been any suggestions to redevelop or open up the building. One of the things that I was noticing as I was taking a look at it thoroughly this afternoon was that there's a series of boarded-up windows. One of the things I'd really like to see, in terms of making that information public, would be some potential redevelopment or redesign plans made publicly available. But here you can see, it's, the building in question immediately adjoins the Hunt Ridge Theater. And I'll just scoot through these quickly, so we can save your time. The way I see it as a resident, not only of the area, but of Las Vegas, these two properties are linked and forever will be. From what I understand, it is the same owner for both properties. What I would really like to bring to the consciousness of the commission and to all the residents of Las Vegas is any future use of one or the other of these properties really should be complementary. Neither should detract from the other, specifically if the Hunt Ridge is to have a future use, which is as illustrious as its past use, which I think the community has enough momentum to support. This is just a real glimpse into how close in proximity the two buildings are. I don't know the feasibility of opening them up to one another, but within this area here, you can see, this is actually the roof line of the building in question, and next door, this is the most western border of the Hunt Ridge. To me, those four feet don't pose an overwhelming opposition to connecting the two properties. One of the things about, hopefully bringing back the Hunt Ridge, is this wall right here. One of the things you'll notice traveling east on Charleston is the Hunt Ridge, aside from its vertical elements, really does not get much street recognition due to this wall. And I'm sure it was put in there at some point. Why it continues to need to be there, a real blemish on that corner, I don't know. I have another picture of just how extensive this wall is. Plenty of parking. Plenty of parking. This is an image where you can see some of the boarded elements of the building. I'd really like to see this beautified for any intended use. These look to be windows, side lights, maybe even with cellar story, clear story elements that have been boarded up. Here's another. I don't know what this originally was intended for. There is no curb cut here, so I'm thinking that this may have been another entrance or some kind of a large window area. Seeing those opened up would be great. And here you get a really, great idea of the proximity to the park. This is the park right here. I agree with you. Circle K is in equal proximity, and I think we get enough of the mixed beverage sales from Circle K. I don't know that we necessarily need any more on that corner. Last time I was here, two weeks ago, somebody had mentioned what was across the street. Maggie's Tavern is still there across the street. I don't know if that was the establishment that was in question, but Charlin Square is across the street. To the west of that, there is a 99 cent store, a laundromat, Burger King. Really, what I'd really like to emphasize with the commission, and I'll close with this, is the Hunt Ridge needs to be in our consciousness as an opportunity to culturally enhance Las Vegas, and any uses of that corner and those two adjoining properties, need to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Anybody else who wants to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing no one close by, I'll give you a minute to respond.
Yes, I don't know if I came to the wrong meeting, but I just came for the liquor/beer thing. We're talking about the structure and the architecture of the building. Just for whatever it's worth, the wall will come down to open up space for the parking. The building, the way it sits in regards to the Hunt Ridge and the supermarket, will, I mean, what we are doing right now is make it look a lot better, and it will be a lot better regardless of the beer and wine license, which is the only reason I'm here. Now, I think that in regards to the, having enough sales across the street, I think we are not, we don't want to let somebody have full control of, I mean, we need to be fair in regards to who sells, I guess the word is, we don't, it shouldn't be a monopoly where one person is allowed to sell beer and wine and the other one is not. We are at the same distance of the park, and it should be equal opportunity for everybody to do business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Commissioner Trowbridge?
Yes, thank you. I'm fairly familiar with the area, and I'm certainly familiar with the Hunt Ridge Theater. I probably just a few of us in the building tonight that have ever been to a movie at the Hunt Ridge Theater. Okay, there's two I see already. Three, four, okay, there's five, been to a movie there. So, but, so we know the history of the Hunt Ridge Theater. I've also been observer and watched hundreds of thousands of dollars of public money be put into the Hunt Ridge Theater as a renovation of a historical preservation project, and I've not seen it go anyplace over the last probably 15 years, easy. It's just sat there and gone, no place. I am fully aware of the negative impacts that alcohol sales within close proximity to a park have on the park. At the same time, having said that, I don't think the addition of another liquor license will increase the sales of liquor in the area. I think it's already about as saturated as you can get. A primary concern to me is that that is the sole remaining corner of that intersection that is in a rundown condition due to the places being vacant. Since that was a furniture store, it's been a couple or three years, it's just simply been boarded up, and it's a real negative to the entire area. I also am very well aware of how difficult it is for certain areas of town to get supermarkets that are full-service, places where you could buy milk and bread and cheese and meat and, you know, laundry, the things that you need to run a home. You know, on the west side of town, we would probably give several million dollars' worth of land, just to entice someone to put a market in to that area. Well, I think we've got a very similar situation in that neighborhood. It's in dire need of a readily accessible market where people could walk to and pick up their groceries and walk home. And for what it's worth, I'm going to support this request based upon those comments.
There's no other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, I would, Commissioner Trowbridge, I essentially concur. I think this is a rather interesting parcel and an interesting area. Long before I set on this commission, I argued vehemently with the city to try to get the old furniture signage, that at one time was from the bottom of the sidewalk all the way up the building, to be reduced, because I thought it was a blight on the area, in particular the great old art deco architecture of the Hunt Ridge. I think the Hunt Ridge itself, from what I can understand of the progression of the building in the last decade, or probably in the last 10 or 15 years, is that it's had opportunities for success, but it's been the victim of the larger success of the community. When I first moved back into that neighborhood, not far from there, the, well, at one time there was a post office right on the corner, which later became a little club for kids called The Sanctuary. It was wildly successful, and I don't know how much grief it caused the neighborhood, but there were certainly a lot of people in the area and supported a lot of the businesses. When the Hunt Ridge was, I think it received quite a bit of grant money through the state for preservation. They had ambitious projects, and if you'll recall, the roof caved in and they redid it. A lot of money was put into that. At one point, it was becoming very successful as a venue for bands. If I'm not mistaken, the Red Hot Chili Peppers appeared there. There were numerous groups that, you know, probably wouldn't be of the caliber for a major strip concert, but there was a great niche there. And it became a victim to the hard rock and the House of Blues. All the bands that were booked into the Hunt Ridge were basically booked into the strip venues, and as a result, the Hunt Ridge and the dream that they had kind of died out. My concern is that the owners now, they had an ambitious project, I believe in 2003. This commission and the city council worked very closely with the owner in trying to develop a good project that we thought would revitalize the area. Unfortunately, I'm assuming it was because of construction costs and delays, that never came to fruition. But now we have somewhat of an opportunity to do something. Wouldn't be my ideal, but I'm concerned that as the building remains vacant, like you had said, Mr. Fuesdale, the owner won't have the money to put into maintenance and keeping it clean and attractive. I'm not thrilled about having an ethnic market in there, per se, but I think that the beer and wine, and I don't see anything about hard liquor, but all we're looking at is not a rezoning, not a site plan, but rather a special use permit to allow them to do, to sell beer and wine at that location. If you can also buy butter and cheese and bread and milk and meat, I think I'm all for that. I mean, we need markets that aren't just little Debbie's and Big Gulps. You need to be able to go in and buy real food for real people. And it's the kind of location, as you mentioned, that you can walk to from your neighborhood, Josh, right around the corner. If this would see my support, though, I would ask that we provide a period of a one-year review, either administratively or returned to the Planning Commission, to determine that there hasn't been a problem as a result of this. I don't know what my fellow commissioners think of this, but I think that's a real fair assessment, so we can see where it's going. But I'd like to see something happen there. On a perfect world, I'd like to see the post office back on the corner, and The Sanctuary, and the Hunt Ridge with all those great bands and movies. I'd love to be able to go to the movies there. My hope is that something can happen with that property that will enhance the neighborhood. But in the interim, I think a market can be a good thing, as long as it can be determined that there isn't any mischief, there isn't any vagrancy, and that the owner, and I'm assuming that's you, you're the proprietor.
Yes.
That you would be responsible for what goes on in your parking lot. There's no garbage out there, there's no graffiti on your walls. I mean, I would like to see the city hold you responsible for ensuring that the business you run is a top-notch business, and that it adds to the neighborhood and not detracts.
I can put any writing.
Thank you.
If I could have another shot at the apple there. I think that the comments regarding the aesthetics associated with the building are very important, too. And while we're here just addressing the request to sell beer and wine, I think I would be missing the opportunity, if I didn't encourage you, to, if the wall is going to come down, it's going to make the appearance of the two buildings more and more look like one. And I would just plead with you to be aware of the historic value of the architectural style that exists there at the Hunt Ridge Theater, and if you could continue it on around to the market, it would make it look very much more attractive. You know, I think that you've got boarded-up windows there relatively small, which in and of themselves, when you get ready to take those down, that's going to force you to make some aesthetic decisions, and I just ask you to keep it consistent with the theater, because that corner's going to come back, and you're going to be the driving force for that corner to come back.
Yeah, that's only good for my business.
Absolutely. And I understand that you're a successful contractor in town, and you know how to do that.
Yes, and that's what I do for a living.
Yes, yeah, the market's a sideline for you, so make it look good, make it be a demonstration for your skills as an artist.
That's the plan. That's the plan.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If I could have just a brief opportunity to? No, we're not going to go back and forth. Thank you. Wait, thank you. Commissioner Evans?
No, I was just going to say, I wanted some assurances as well, that you're not going to repaint the walls like they were. The signage and all of that is, you can do it in such a way where you have signage without all that, you know, sale $1.99, you know.
Well, Commissioner, I'm pretty sure none of that matches our code today, and I think I-
Mr. Chairman, that would be correct. The signage that I see there exceeds the 20% maximum wall signage that's permitted by code.
And I would agree, but I would also suggest that you take a drive around my neighborhood and see all the things that don't match code that, for whatever reason, remain. So I just want some assurances from you, that you're not going to junk up the building.
And, you know, it's hard to explain right now, you know, in detail, what my idea, you know, is, you know, in regards to redoing the building, but this, you know, among other things that I do, you know, general construction, I started as a painter, drywall, and a stucco contractor, and this is what I do for a living. And it's very easy for me to do a great improvement on a building like this, and it's pretty simple for me, you know. And also, you know, the way I see business, it's hard for me to explain to you how I see business, you know, but believe me, my idea is to make the place look, you know, at least very nice, if not, you know, nicer than any building around that area.
I agree with Commissioner Trowbridge and Commissioner Evans, but I still also believe that we have a park there that really needs the city's attention. I know it gets a lot of attention, usually the wrong kind. And the Hunt Ridge is a missed opportunity that the community needs to get behind, and I hope that we aren't making a mistake by what we're embarking on here, because I think the Hunt Ridge is something that isn't going to revive itself by a market next door or beer and wine sales next door. But it is a market, it is on the corner, it is within the pedestrian distance of the park, but there's no other comments or a motion?
In regards to item number 31, I make a special use permit 24243. We make a motion for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
One year review?
With the additional condition of a one-year review concerning the beer and wine sales.
Would that review be admin or PC?
The administrative review, based upon any complaints regarding things like sale of alcohol to underage.
Commissioner Dunham?
Yeah, I'd like to see it go to PC. That way, this gentleman has made some verbal commitments to us, and that way, he would be coming back before us in a year, and knowing that, I would like to see this at PC.
That's a friendly suggestion, I'll accept.
Sure. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, if we could also have the applicant agree to those conditions on the record? You are in agreement with that?
Yes, yes, I am.
So with that motion for approval, subject to all staff's conditions, and the one-year review at Planning Commission, motion is for approval. Please cast your vote. And that is approved, and that goes on to City Council on?
11:21.
11:21. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 40, VAR 24346, variance, public hearing, applicant owner Joe Wade Corporation, request for a variance to allow a proposed monument sign to be 75 feet from an existing freestanding sign, where 100 feet is the required minimum separation distance on .58 acres at 3862 West Sahara Avenue.
Staff finds no hardship associated with this site and recommends denial.
Staff finds no hardship associated with this site and recommends denial.
Good evening.
Brandon Scott, six-three-one-seven-two, Pocaway. We're not in agreement with staff recommendation.
Scott Rose, thirty-eight sixty-two West Sahara. And we've come to ask that they reconsider that. The cellular industry has become very competitive and there are cellular stores popping up on every corner. We feel we need that sign to help us gain a little bit of an edge, get more visibility. There's an existing multi-tenant sign, pylar sign already there, that's full of long-term tenants that are probably not going anywhere. The added visibility would benefit the entire shopping center by bringing more traffic into it.
Members of the commission, Mr. Chairman, thank you for hearing me represent the sign company. As you may or may not be aware, that in most multi-tenant centers, they generally have a space for each of the tenants that go in there. However, this center has been here for quite some time, and so as different parcels were subdivided off of it, that made room for obviously more businesses to go in, not allowing Sprint to have the space on the sign that was already there. For instance, Carl's Jr. has been there for quite some time, their monument sign that they have just down the way, so they're taking advantage of two different opportunities for advertising. They do not have the separation as well, although they've been there for quite some time. We tried the option of moving it further to the east to give us the one-hundred-foot separation, but there's a Mexican restaurant that's just next door. We're a hundred, over a hundred feet away from that one, but we're not able to get the separation while staying outside of the site visibility zone on that corner as well, unless we go with the seventy-five feet. Now, the sign itself is within the code, it's under the seventy-square-foot maximum for what the sign allowable is, it's under the height requirement as well. And we don't see any other reasons that denial wouldn't be there. But again, the Sprint store is just trying to take advantage of the opportunities that it has for advertising, and hopefully this is one that they can also use.
Thank you. This was advertised public hearing. Is anybody here who should speak on this item? Please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close public hearing. Commissioners comment? Commissioner Evans?
Are you picking on me? I don't find a legal reasoning other than that it would help your business. And candidly, you know, I would think that the quality of your telecommunications service is what would drive your business, not three signs. But I don't see any reasoning for the sign in terms of, I mean, I think you have to give us a legal reason as to why the variance is needed. And what I'm hearing you say is that you need the additional sign because it would increase your business. I think that's what you said. And that doesn't give us any legal reason to hang our hat, in my opinion.
You know, I'm well aware of this project, well aware of the sign and the history of it. I think, I understand your interest in having advertising and, you know, more signs or better signs, as most of the sign industry does propose, but your building sits right up on the street. And if you look at, I mean, I'm looking at the photographs here with the drive, I'm not so sure if your sign doesn't create a visual barrier to seeing up and down the street. But conversely, you've got a pretty good sign on the side of the building that if they can't see that one, they certainly aren't going to see this monument sign here. So I just don't agree that this sign is that significant of a disadvantage or a difference. And to create the variance and then wind up having, you know, we'll have the guy in the corner wanting a variance, we'll have the shopping center wanting to raise their sign. If all of this came in as one master sign plan, it'd be, you know, a little different way to view this, but I can't support the sign the way, the request for the variance.
I would concur with you. I think as you're going westbound on Sahara, you see a duplicate sign. You see two Sprints. Bingo. And I don't see the need for that. I mean, the one up on the building is the largest sign, the easiest to see from the furthest distance, and the one on the ground is not readily visible at the speeds that go on through that particular area. And I think it's a clutter situation, and I don't think it lends well to this particular center. I'll make a motion. VAR two-four-three-four-six, agenda item forty, move for denial.
If there's a motion, please cast your vote. And that is denied, and that is final actionless appeal within ten days. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, following items forty-one and forty-two, I will have to abstain as I am engineer of record for that parcel.
Item forty-one, VAR two-four-five-oh-two, variance public hearing, applicant owner, Durango and Centennial LLC, requests for a variance to allow one hundred and two parking spaces, where one hundred and twenty-eight is the minimum required at the northwest corner of Centennial Parkway and Durango Drive. Companion item, SUP two-three-oh-eight-six, special use permit related to VAR two-four-five-oh-two public hearing, requests for a special use permit for a proposed three-hundred-and-thirteen square foot massage establishment within a four-thousand-sixty-two square foot day spa with a waiver to allow a distance separation of three-hundred-and-fifty feet from a residential zone property where four-hundred feet is required.
The parking variance and separation waiver indicate that this use is not appropriate at this location, and staff recommends denial of this request.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Tony Celeste. Address is thirty-eight hundred Howard Hughes Parkway, here on behalf of the applicant. If I can direct your attention to the overhead, you can see the site is generally located on the southwest corner of what would be the two-fifteen and Durango. This probably looks pretty familiar to you as this was, this site plan was approved some time ago. What you're seeing now is the uses coming back into this shopping center, and that's why we are here on this related site plan. The use that we are referring to tonight is located in, I believe it's Building C on the plan, and it's called the salon here, generally under Title Nineteen, in a commercial-zoned area. When you have a salon and day spa, you can have an accessory use for a massage. Unfortunately, we are in the town center and we fall under those guidelines, and because of that, we have to request a special use permit. Like I said, the massage is going to be an accessory use to the hair salon, nail salon, and it's going to be typical or analogous to higher-end salons that you see around town, such as the Euphoria or Dolphins Court. We did have to come in with a waiver for separation requirements to residential. We are approximately three-hundred-and-fifty feet, where four-hundred is required, which is a deviation of only about fifty feet. Additionally, we are coming in for a waiver for parking. Initially, when we first brought this in, we were seeking almost really a one-third parking reduction. And we have now, the applicant, the developer, has worked extremely hard to reduce it to what we have presented to you tonight, a twenty percent reduction. This really is attributed to the number of parking spots that are required per your code for the haircut station. I'm going to, as you can see on here, I don't know if you can, maybe you can zoom in. Sorry, it's a little bit, the print's a little small. But I think when you've taken to, when you've taken consideration the amount of parking needed for a salon, that you may find it a bit excessive. And, you know, that is the code, but I'd like to just point out that for each hair station, you need three parking spots per station. So what the code is basically interpreting is that there is a parking space required for the beautician, there's a parking space required for the person getting their haircut, and then a person waiting in the lobby the whole time. Now, I've been advised by some of the female, some of my female colleagues in the office, who I would defer to as experts in this, Ms. Lazovich and Ms. Allen, and they inform me that women do not wait two hours for their haircut to be taken place, and that this is excessive. And anyways, the salon itself is requiring fifty-five spots or nearly half of the parking that we're providing. And I think what you'll find interesting, that in conjunction with the salon, there are some other uses here that really are overparked. For example, we are providing a Domino's carry, primarily carry-out, take-out, but regardless, nonetheless, we're required to park that to restaurant standards. That is taking up ten spaces. Additionally, we have a tanning bed salon, which is, I think, also taking up another twelve spaces. You have a dry cleaner use that is taking up spaces, where these are uses that people come in and out really fast. So overall, I think, you know, when you take a look at the balance of the excessive parking requirements placed on the salon, as well as the other uses related to this site, that you'll see that the parking really is not a concern. And for those reasons, we respectfully request your approval tonight.
Thank you. This was advertised public hearing. Is anybody here who should speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, a quick question, if I may, of Mr. Celeste. The Domino's that you refer to, is there any on-site seating for on-site dining, or is it only take-out?
There, I have not seen the site, but I do presume there probably is a table or two in there, but it is predominantly carry-out, take-out, and that's what they anticipate. I'm sorry.
Primarily a take-out function.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
How many square feet in the pizza?
The pizza is just over, it's one thousand and sixty-seven square feet, just over a thousand square feet, and that requires...
How many square feet in the salon?
The salon is just about four thousand square feet.
And how many bases are required for that?
Forty-five.
Forty-five or fifty?
Fifty-five, I'm sorry. Excuse me, fifty-five.
Fifty-five, okay. Now, would somebody please tell me why a thousand square feet of a restaurant requires ten spaces and a salon with four thousand feet, four times that, requires fifty-five? Could you explain it, please, just so I understand?
Commissioner, I'm sorry, just to clarify, I've just been notified that the Domino's pizza does not have any seating inside it from our, from the client, so, sorry.
I understand the question, Director.
Yes, I do. The parking standard was with regard to the per cube or pure space in the barber and beauty shop, came about a number of years ago, based upon problems that had occurred throughout the city. A text amendment within the last couple of years has eliminated that requirement when the beauty or barber shop is part of a larger shopping center. In this case, the shopping center is smaller than that which allows the lesser parking standard. So in some instances, it has been eliminated, but that is an unusually high parking standard based upon this city's determination that that was what was necessary for those types of uses. So it was a decision made at the policy level with regard to setting that parking standard.
If we had a center that was a lot larger than this, we could probably waive it down?
Gentlemen, what is the...
If the shopping center was twenty-five thousand gross square feet, then the parking ratio for all uses would be one to two-fifty.
Okay.
As this is only fourteen thousand, a little over fourteen thousand, each use is parked individually per the code.
Okay.
Commissioner, with regards to the industry, when you get over that twenty-five thousand feet, there is enough of those overlapping uses that our code deals with in some cases, but the general retailers, you have some give and take. It's on the smaller centers where, if they have the reasonable demand, there isn't enough flexible space here. And that's why the code reads the way it does.
Okay.
The restaurant, the take-out restaurant, typically a thousand feet, you've got so many employees per kitchen area, then you've got delivery deal. The ten per thousand or close to that has been fairly consistent to restaurant demand, except in much larger venues.
I guess I'm surprised that the salon requires fifty-five spaces. That seems somewhat excessive to me for salon, but if it's Saturday morning, I guess you could probably fill that up pretty easily. But I just don't quite buy that particularly. If there's no more comment, I'll make a motion. On agenda item number forty-one, VAR two-four-five-oh-two, move for approval, subject conditions?
And that is approved, and that will go on. Also, item forty-two?
Item number forty-two, SUP two-three-zero-eight-six, move for approval, subject conditions?
Please cast your vote.
Thank you.
And that is approved, and that will go on to City Council on November twenty-first. And please note that Commissioner Dunham did abstain on that item. Item forty-three, VAR two-four-five-one-six, variance public hearing, applicant owner, Monticello Providence, Inc., requests for a variance to allow a five-foot living area setback where eight feet is required on point oh-six acres at sixty-seven thirty-six Valcor Street.
Staff finds there's no hardship associated with this request, as the applicant could construct a smaller house on this lot and thus comply with the setback requirements. Staff recommends denial.
Good evening.
Good evening. Jason Capital, twenty-seven twenty-seven South Rainbow. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Due to the curving of Valcor Street and the irregular-shaped lot on Lot Sixteen, we ran into a problem with keeping our driveway length criteria. The Plan One model was the only model that we could get to work and to keep our driveway length to conform with code. Unfortunately, the Plan One model does encroach into the living area setback by three feet. We do meet all other setback requirements and driveway criteria with the Plan One. We are only asking for a variance on this one lot, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Thank you. This was advertised public hearing. Is anybody who should speak on this item? Seeing no one, close public hearing. Commissioner Dunham?
Is this, is this already existing?
Yes, sir.
No. You know, one of the things we do is we allow a lot of units into these developments. We pack them in.
Yes, sir.
And I'm looking at the, on the screen, and I just don't understand why the radius of the street on this one causes problems that it doesn't cause anywhere else. Are we using the wrong model on this particular lot, and we could pull something else out of the shelf and put it on there and not have this problem?
No, sir. This is our smallest model. The curving of the streets is per Quisatch Design Guidelines.
Is it possible this could become a park, then?
I don't think so.
Okay. I'm having trouble following that the street caused a problem at only one lot. You think the street, the way they curve, there's a lot, there's a lot of curve on these streets. Why did it happen on one lot? Can you explain it?
I, I'll try.
Okay.
In order to meet our driveway criteria, which we cannot, per land development, we cannot, we cannot change that requirement. We have to, we have to meet that requirement, it's a safety issue. The Plan One was the only, the only model that we have out of our four that we could get to meet the driveway criteria on this lot. Now, as far as the curvature of the street, I'm not an engineer, but it gives us almost a trapezoid-shaped lot. us a, almost a trapezoid shaped lot, as you can see here on my, on my exhibit.
And I see some other trapezoids on there also.
I understand.
Yeah.
Just on, it's, it was weird, just on this one lot, we couldn't, we could not get it to work.
Well, I, I, when, when these things come up, I always have sincere concern that somebody hasn't gone and found the proper building to fit on the lot and have said, oh, we can only use these four. There's not a fifth that works.
Unfortunately.
And we've, and we've shoved so many units into these developments, and that was the agreement to get it done according to those plans, and now we have to, now, this is not the major end of the world, one lot, I admit that, but I, I, I'm not understanding from a, I guess, an engineering standpoint, why this has happened, and maybe I could get some help on engineering.
Well, I've, I've just got a, a quick comment on here, that this is not just one lot. If you take a look at the backup, they had deviations to increase the garage set, set, the garage face setback on seventy-two lots. They had a deviation to increase the setback on nineteen lots, uh, another deviation for a total of five lots, and some more deviations for two more lots. So these guys have received deviations through the Providence Master Plan for a number of lots, and I realize that this is one out of many, and that you're kind of, from what I can tell, backed up against a, between a rock and a hard spot, and I, and, and your backup said that, you know, you could, you could modify that house, but I, I, I don't know. I just think for two or three feet that it's not going to be worth it, but you guys bought these pro, whoever bought this, this lot, or these sub, these subdivisions, knew what they were buying before they ever got into this, and knew what product you were going to put on there, and now you're eighty, ninety, or a hundred lots with deviations? That, that's, that's a significant amount, so...
Unfortunately, I wasn't involved in this.
No, yeah, but guess what? You're here ahead before us, and we get to whack you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Good, I'm, I'm interested in your comments, Commissioner, because I'm hearing the word deviation, and here we are considering a variance. Would somebody please enlighten me on deviations versus variances?
Well, this is just the...
I know, I see where you got it.
Yeah, from the, from the Providence Master Plan, and I didn't do enough research on that to find out what that was, but I'm just saying that, and maybe staff can help us out here. I see a smirk on, on smirk.
Uh, in the, in the past, staff had addressed these alterations through a deviation process. The Cliff's Edge Master Development Agreement is silent on not, on product or on setback conformance. Uh, it was further research that truly these would be variances and not administrative deviation, because there is no process within the Cliff's Edge Master Plan Development Agreement to do administrative deviations or variances. It's silent on both, and in that case, after reviewing these after a few, few times going through, staff determined that a variance would probably be the appropriate method to, uh, address these deviation, uh, to address these setback, uh, limitations.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Evans?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I would hope that the applicant would take these, uh, comments to heart when designing in the future, um, but I think this is one lot, and, uh, I don't know what the options are other than to say no, and that's not my inclination at this point, providing there isn't a public safety issue. And, uh, the way I'm reading this is it says that, uh, to allow five-foot setback where eight feet is required. So we're looking at a three-foot deviation. There is a reason for the standard, I'm sure, but, uh, my thought is that I would be willing to grant the variance, um, at least vote for approval of the variance, but with the admonition of the applicant, that they need to make sure that this is minimized in the future.
Commissioner?
And I, and I appreciate your comments, but let's be fair and just. There's seventy-some deviations, and there's, there's no shame at the table here. I mean, that, you know, what's another house? What's another thing? I, I'd like to ask the applicant, uh, is there another solution to this? Is there re, you know, spending the time and effort to, to resubmit your tentative map on these two par, this parcel and the parcel behind it?
As of, as of today, no. This is, this is the only option that we have is to come in.
Because that would be costly and, and very laborious and time consuming, and, I mean, if it is absolutely illegal that you can't adjust your, your tentative map, that's fine, but is there a way to adj, but the property line behind it, I mean, I, I think, I get a feeling we're going to see the lot behind it eventually, with another house. Um, so, I mean, is this something that, uh, every property line on these parcels are straight except this one, which seems there may be an engineering error, and it seems to me that maybe this is an engineering fix?
Um, I, I'm not the project engineer, but I've talked with her, and she said at this, that there's nothing else we can do.
That might be at her doorstep?
I, I, I can't talk on her behalf, but I know that they've, they've tried every, every avenue that they could to try to make this come in conformance with all the setbacks and the driveway criterias.
Well, I mean, if you look at it on that whole block, this is the only one where somebody opted to, uh, go from a ninety-degree property line and move this around, so, um, it seems like somebody gave some thought to this when they were doing the map, but in great detail. But, yeah, you, you weren't here in the beginning, so...
I apologize.
We're, I want to know...
I mean, it's only one lot, but I gotta tell you, it's like...
I understand.
Is there, is there any obligation to, to even attempt to follow on some of these things? I mean...
Um, as far, as far as I know, I know the applicant is going to move forward if, if this variance is, uh, approved, and build the house.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask if, if we keep isolating this as one issue, but it may be adding on to the other seventy or eighty or ninety that have already been done, and this is a standard thing that's happened in this addition, uh, and we just happen to be hearing about one of them. And the question is, should have all the other deviations appeared as variances?
If, if I may...
And so I'm concerned that it's a mass situation rather than just one lot.
If I may, the deviations that are referenced have to do with changes to the design guidelines, which is an appropriate, which is not a variance, that's changing the plan. And again, the other was a change in land use designation, and the third was again in design guidelines. If it is, if there is modification to the plan in its entirety, then that's a modification to the plan. In this case, it's one lot only, and that's why it is a variance. So this is the appropriate application, and the other applicant, the other actions that are referenced within this staff report, um, would not have been variances, those were modifications to the plan. In this case, the way, um, the way staff analyzes this is not that there's, there is anything wrong, if you will, with the lot. The lot was created based upon the plan that they submitted and the map that they got approved. What you have is a, a structure that does not fit on to the lot meeting the setbacks, and of course, whether or not they have, um, a structure within their, their toolkit of structures that meets the setbacks is not for the city to become involved with, but rather, can there be a house built on this lot that meets code? And certainly, there can.
Yes.
And that's, that is the basis of staff's recommendation and analysis.
The only way you find out is denial. That's the bottom line.
That is staff's recommendation.
I understand.
I would, I would like to add one thing. This is our smallest model that we have, so, um...
Smallest model for this development?
Yes, sir.
Not the smallest development, the, the, unit that exists somewhere.
Sure.
Okay.
If I, if I may, if I, when I look at your, your rendering that shows the dimensions, I, am I right that we've got, uh, side setbacks on one side? Is that three feet, four inches on one side? On the other side, uh, three feet, feet, maybe five inches?
No, they're both three, three point two-five inches.
Feet?
Oh, yes.
Three point two-five feet, okay.
Yes, sir. Three point two-five inches.
And the other is three point three-three feet on the side. And then we go to the back, uh, of the lot, we've got the one corner there, it's three feet from the property line from the neighboring home?
Yes, sir.
And then when we go to the front, this, uh, southeast corner, it's five point oh-four feet from the, is that the sidewalk or is that the street?
Back of the curb.
Back of the curb, is it?
Or back of the sidewalk.
Is there a sidewalk there?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Um, okay, the structure, or the construction of the home on this particular property, then I think is not only going to make this a lesser valued home, but then you're negatively impacting the surrounding properties. So you've got five other properties that are going to be reduced value as a result of putting this particular model in this particular either undersized lot or oversized home. Is that, is that fact?
Well, we do, we, we meet setback criteria on all the other setbacks except the living area front setback.
Okay, okay. So are we, are the other five homes currently built?
Yes, sir.
Are we going to notify the buyers of those five other homes that this one is going to probably be built after they've bought their home? Now you're going to have this big house stuck in there that's going to be sitting right there, three feet from their backyard, or two feet, point?
I'd be, I'd be happy to accept a condition.
That you have to notice the people that they've got this, you know, they've got setback variances next door?
Yes, sir.
I guess the solution is simple.
What would it take for me?
I'm sorry.
I mean, that, that, you would have to notify the, the potential buyers, that they're buying houses that are going to be negatively impacted, and, and I would hope that that notification resulted in significantly reduced price, and therefore, the benefit of squeezing in that one more house is totally offset. So you've gained nothing, except picked up six houses you're not going to be able to sell.
I mean, we, we still meet setback criteria.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm talking about someone that buys the home that's going to live there that doesn't know a setback from a canary, okay?
But all, all the other homes in the development all had the same...
Same, same, I hope so. The whole thing, we call it, what are these called? Deviance.
The only, the only, I think there's a... The only deviation we're taking is in this, this front living setback.
Right, to put it, five point oh-four feet.
There's a sidewalk and then there's a street.
And so, like, I'm six foot tall, so it's about this far from the, from the curb, and the side houses are about this far, and the back lots about that far from the, and that's it. That's what you're getting for your, and these are not cheap homes, are they?
No, sir.
So these are fairly expensive homes, they're this far apart. Uh, do they have any soundproofing in the, in the walls so that you don't actually have to hear the conversations of the, of the people that are your neighbors?
I, I do not know that. I know they...
I would, I would put that as another condition, perhaps.
And I'm sure these houses are, are going to be on the market for meeting...
For a long time, I would project. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm giving you a bad time, and I apologize to you for having me the one that asked.
We, we need to get back on track. We beat up on you enough.
Okay, we beat him up.
One, one question I do have for staff, real quick. On our, on the overhead, we show this parcel on a lot, but there's three parcels apparently to the east of this that are shaded. I'm just curious, it, or four parcels, is there something significant in that?
These are the models.
Oh, those are the models?
Those are just the models.
Okay, so they're already built, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, then if there's any question, motion?
I'd be happy to make the motion.
Commissioner Shrobridge?
Make the motion for, in regards to item number forty-three, variance twenty-four-five-sixteen, to support staff recommendation to deny this request.
Okay, if there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is denied, and that is final action, was appealed within ten days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item forty-seven. VAR two-four-five-six-one, variance public hearing, applicant owner, Lopez Family Trust, request for a variance to allow a proposed twenty-one-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot detached ancillary structure, class two garage, where fifteen-hundred-and-thirty-four square feet is the maximum allowed, and to allow a height of twenty-one feet, where seventeen feet is the maximum allowed, at seventy-eight-hundred West Rosado Way?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, once again, I refer to the green sheets. We did have a, a recent revision to the elevations, and those are found on page seven, eight, and nine, and ten. Uh, the applicant has added a, uh, a roof to be more compatible with the surrounding homes and the principal structure. Uh, however, staff is unable to support this project as they find it, uh, not in, uh, conformance to the plan, and is a self-imposed hardship and recommends denial.
Good evening.
Good evening. Sheriff Rubel and Sharon Lopez, seventy-eight-hundred West Rosado Way.
I'm Sharon Lopez. I'd like to point out to the commissioners that the application information that was originally put out on the announcement was in error. There was never a, a height problem. The building is actually lower than the size of the house. Apparently, there was a transposition in the numbers when they printed it up. The house is twenty-one feet, and the building is at the very highest part of the peak, and when using Title Nineteen's height calculation formula, it comes up to be eighteen feet, three inches for the house, and sixteen feet, three inches for the garage. Um, also on the staff report that I found on the internet, they're saying that we have a permit for a detached storage garage that's five thousand square feet, and this is the same building we're talking about tonight that's twenty-one-sixty, so that's another thing that you might want to, um, notice. Uh, we built our home in nineteen ninety-four, and at that time, we had this same building on the plans when they went through and they were approved, saying this would be the future structure we'll be building as soon as we can. We've both had some health challenges in the past, so these plans were postponed, so we've been waiting for twelve to thirteen years to finally build our building. Uh, we were encouraged when we saw other buildings in the area that some of them literally took up the entire backyard, and they had come in for a variance and, and were able to build their building within three feet of their rear and side fences, and, uh, that's not what we wanted to do. We wanted our building to be beautiful, we wanted it to enhance our house at the same time that it was going to store our recreational vehicles and our cars and our, our personal items that we right now have been sitting outside. Uh, so we have, uh, designed a building that would accommodate all of the things that we had, and hopefully, uh, giving the look of the neighborhood. The original drawing that you had, uh, was for a typical metal building. That's what we submitted to the building department. We since have changed it and added a tile roof, the same color as the roof on our house. We've given the building an overhang, which is something they can structurally do without changing the building, and gave it a design that was more in line with the, the neighborhood. I drew another drawing so you could get a, a better look at how the building is in relation to the house in question. Can you see that? How the, the heights of the building?
That's fine.
Um, it shows that the garage itself would be, uh, not as high as the other building. I would also, uh, like to point out that I spoke with a number of our neighbors prior to, uh, coming in for a permit, and then when we found out we were going to have to go for a variance, I did speak to some of the neighbors again, and, uh, the neighbor to the north of us is very much, uh, in favor of the building. The neighbors on the Conno side, um, there's two, two neighbors there on the Conno side that the building would be visible from their front yard, from their home, and I have, uh, like to submit signatures from them that they approve of the building. Unfortunately, the neighbor to the west signed it prior to consulting with the other member of this household, and she objects, and they're here tonight, you'll get to hear from them in a minute. Um, had we realized that the... Had we realized that the building did not meet the Title 19 criteria when we were in the design stages of this, we certainly would have probably made some adjustments. However, the building has been on order for some time due to the recommendations from staff when we spoke with the, them on six different occasions with the plans in our hands, and it wasn't until after we went in for our final permit and we had the soils report and the foundation plans and everything else done that they told us we needed to have a variance. So that's what brings us here tonight to try and, and get a variance. We live on a half acre lot, we purchased this lot so that it would accommodate this type of a building. We're only using 23% of the available land on our property, due mostly to setbacks and things that the city requires. So we would like to be able to build the building for our own personal use to store our items. There isn't enough room on our lot to build a house big enough unless we wanted to tear this one down and start over and do two or three stories, which then wouldn't be compatible with the neighborhood either, to build a building that this size. But this building has been laid out specifically with three entrances to accommodate a motorhome and a boat and a truck and a Jeep and a car and a ATVs and trailers and things that are right now parked all over the backyard.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is correct, the height variance is, and it is part of the notice, is not needed, and the staff report accurately reflects that the height of the accessory structure does not exceed the main dwelling unit.
Thank you. This was advertised as a public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on the side, and please come forward, and we'll give you a chance to respond there.
I'm Gary Dale, 7812 West Rosado, the house directly west of the house requesting the variance, this is my wife Holly Dale. And I have a few pictures here. I'll just set these on here. Currently, this would be our backyards. Here's my backyard, here's the house that requesting the variance. We have our swimming pool right here. In addition to this, they've added a room addition, and now they're requesting for this garage here, so it might be a little hard to see, but this is what's, these are going to be the changes to the backyard. I'm going to have a building sitting here blocking off my morning sunlight coming into my yard. They're extending their house out several feet here, which is going to block off any view of sunlight I have, and I have a narrow area here through which I'm going to get any skyline coming into my backyard in the morning. Right now, when we look over our fence next to our pool, this is what we see, we see out over there, we see the, the trees and some houses, and there's a vehicle there. That would, that would be disappearing if this variance was granted. I, literally the only spot on, I'll hold that down so you can see, literally the only spot on this property that won't have some type of building or extended building on it if they're allowed this variance is their leach field, because they can't build over it. This is going to be a metal building, it's going to take up a sizable amount of the skyline from my backyard, it's not going to look anything like the houses in the neighborhood. The houses in the neighborhood are all stucco. I have spoken to a few of the neighbors in the area where homes adjacent to them are allowed to put in buildings like this, and it just literally blocks off their, their whole view of the, of the sky. They're literally, this, this is going to be looming over my swimming pool area and my backyard. So I am the neighbor that, that did sign the letter without, foolishly, without consulting with my wife, and once my wife had been shown how the building was going to be placed back there and pointed out to me what it was going to do to our pool and our backyard line, I had to agree that, and I'm sorry, permit me one more time, the room extension that they're bringing out of the back of the house is going to come about halfway across my pool, as far as my visibility is concerned. This building that they're building here is going to come all the way up to my pool, it's just literally going to loom over my backyard and my pool, so. Did you have anything?
And I would like to add, when he called, I told, oh, I'm sorry, Holly Dale, 7812 West Rosado Way, when he called me, he was actually quite upset. He said, well, she came over, she asked me to sign this variance, and I did. And I said, okay. He said, well, when he, when she, he signed it, he wanted to be a good neighbor, and we were actually thinking of building one ourselves, quite a bit smaller, but he said, that's no problem. Well, he signed it and said, you know, I just, as long as it's not going to be an eyesore like those down the street. And he was furious, he called me, he said, she said, oh, well, it will be an eyesore, and that's what she told him. He was upset that he signed it.
Maybe, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure who you're, when you say he and...
My husband, he's the he. When he, he had...
When your husband, okay. He signed. Okay.
I did not sign anything.
So you were upset that your husband signed it, not knowing...
No, he was upset too, because it wasn't until afterwards that she described the sign.
But you both disagree with it at this point?
Yes.
Thank you. And, and, and I'm sorry, you know, to add one more fact, I did say as long as it is an eyesore like the other huge buildings that people put in their backyards in another area of our neighborhood, and that, that was what she said, yes, it's going to be an eyesore just like those.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farley, 240 North 19th Street. Out of curiosity, how did they determine the 1,534 square foot maximum there? Is, is there a, how, is, is that...
It's a math, is within the code, there's a, there's a calculation that relates to half of the square footage of the house?
I, I see.
The main residence.
But if they're, okay, just follow me here for just a second. If they're going to add on to the house, is that, would, would that, then they're allowed a larger garage?
That's a different calculation based on setbacks.
That's a different calculation.
Right.
But the other last thing I'd like to put, somebody said something about a metal, but if they go downtown, you can see the urban lofts is built in some, 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 some nice product that have, have metal, metal siding on them, and, and they look nice.
I'll give you, if there's anybody else wish to speak on the side, seeing no one close public hearing, I'll give you a moment to respond, and any questions that we have?
We were builders in this community for quite a number of years, and our house is a steel home. We put stucco on the exterior, but it's essentially a steel home. We know how to build in steel, and that's one of the reasons we chose to build a steel building rather than a wood building. We're going to be storing motorized vehicles in it with gasoline in them, we wanted to have a, you know, a metal building. We have colored it the same as the house, we've put tile on the roof that's the same as our house, and I'm, I'm really saddened that our neighbors are not happy about this. Unfortunately, if we are forced to build a building that would conform to the 1,534 square feet, it would still sit in the same spot, it would only be shorter, and we couldn't get as many, much of our stuff in there to be able to get it out of the sun, it would sit in front on the east side of the property. It wouldn't change anything for them, and I, I'm saddened that they feel that way about it, but this building isn't going to shade their backyard. The way the sun moves across there, this, this lot sits north and south, and you, you get all the sun you want coming from the south into our yard, so that building isn't going to shade the other way. The sun moves around this way, and this building isn't going to shade their yard, other than in the very early hours of the morning.
Thank you. Commissioners, Ms. Collins, Commissioner Stein?
Well, members of commission know that I'm not enamored by large buildings and backyards, especially when they exceed what's allowed, and I think this is a prime example of why I'm opposed to those situations, because they are a large mass, too large to be in those backyards. Also, this is a nice neighborhood, a very nice neighborhood, and I think if somebody's going to build even the code, they need to do stucco in keeping with the neighborhood and not a metal building. I went around that neighborhood extensively, and I found a couple of metal buildings, and they are ugly, and they don't belong in that neighborhood. There's too much invested in that neighborhood. And so, the way this is proposed now, I would have to, I, I could not lend my support to it. I do want to ask staff, is it legal to have a very large metal storage unit in backyards? Is that legal?
As long as it conforms to the minimum size, the coverage, and the other part we would review is the aesthetic appearance of the storage unit to see if it's compatible with the existing main dwelling unit, that's the way the code reads.
Wow.
So we would review it on those standards.
Yeah, this is a big white piece of metal in the backyard, and I don't think it conforms at all, but I, I'm not going to support this the way it's been proposed. Thank you.
Question, or Commissioner Evans?
No, I just would concur as well. I'm always perplexed by these applications when there isn't the concurrence of the neighborhood. The people who live directly above these properties, their property values and their, if nothing else, their perceptions are altered by, you know, these kinds of developments, but it's 2,160 square feet. That's huge. It's, it's almost as big as my home. I, I realize it's a large lot, but our code would allow for a building of 1,534 square feet. That's huge, too. I don't know why you would need three bays. The applicant you mentioned, you have a Jeep, an RV, a boat, you need a storage facility. This is a neighborhood. I don't think the code is unreasonable in allowing you to build at 50% of your footprint, in which case it would be 1,500 square feet. But if your neighbors object to this, and I would concur with Commissioner Steiman, the aesthetics of it, I think, would be compromised by a metal structure, and it, it just won't see my support. I'm tired of these applications coming forward where it impacts neighbors whose, potentially their property values could be diminished because someone wants to build, to overbuild on a lot, and I don't think a shed looks good. Thank you.
Thank you. Real quick question for staff. If this was a 1,534 square foot structure, and if the applicant brought forward something with tile on it and, would, what would be the, we would not see it, right?
I, I think you would still see it. We couldn't support it because architecturally, it's not compatible with the main dwelling unit. We would have, we would request that the material be similar to the main dwelling unit.
But if they, if they opted to stucco it the same as the house and made it 1,530 square feet, I mean, we would not see it, and no the neighbors, right?
That is correct, it would be permitted by code.
And I agree, the structure is, is unduly large, and I think in, if there's going to be a structure back there, I think it needs to be compatible. I'm not a big fan of the metal buildings, metal siding, and I think a metal building with tile on it's going to look out of place as well at a distance. I mean, you may see the tile, but you won't, you're still, it's still a metal building. But, and, and metal studs and structure, I don't, that's not the question, it's the exterior skin of the building that, that I, I think is more of an industrial feel, and I don't believe it fits in the neighborhood. So I, I would encourage the applicant, whatever you do going forward, I'm not going to support the, the building at its size, but if you opt to build a smaller building, I think, I would hope that you would still take your neighbor's comments and make it compatible with your existing structure from a stucco and finished point of view, so. Motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion on the agenda item number 47, VAR 24561, move for denial.
There's a motion, please cast your vote. And that is denied, and that will, is final action, unless appealed within 10 days to City Council. Thank you. Item 48. RQR 24332, required one-year review, public hearing, applicant Lamar Outdoor Advertising, owner Bartis Mary, Mary Wan LLC, required, a request for a required one-year review of an approved special use permit U-0260-94 for a 40-foot tall, 14 by 48-foot off-premise advertising billboard sign at 3201 North Rancho Drive.
Mr. Chairman, this billboard is now located within the exclusionary zone of the city of Las Vegas for off-premise advertising signs, and staff is unable to support its continuance at this location.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Scott Naster with Lamar Advertising, 1863 Helm Drive. The subject sign, as you can see, is on the northwest corner of Cheyenne and Rancho. It was built approximately 13 years ago, it was reviewed and approved by the planning commission and City Council in 2000, again in 2005. Sign's in very good condition, it's received all the final building inspections, and currently it meets all zoning and separation requirements, so that would ask for your approval.
Thank you. This was advertised as a public hearing, if anybody wish to speak on the side, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farley, 240 North 19th Street. Is there a picture of the sign itself? Do we have one?
There's one.
Please show the other face.
And this isn't in support of the Colorado Rockies, but...
They're losing.
Anybody else wish to speak on the side? Seeing no one in close public hearing, Commissioners, Commissioner Shrobridge?
If I, if I could, this is a required one-year review, and we're requesting it go to five years before we have another review?
If I may, the issue of it, if the planning commission believes that it should remain, the issue of it being an exclusionary zone is not going to change within five years, and therefore, if your decision is to approve it, staff believes that it may well be four or five years if you wish to make that recommendation.
Typically, don't we go with three-year reviews, though?
One.
You know, it's with one, one, three, and five.
We really don't have a typical...
There's, yeah, there is no standard, so whatever you believe is appropriate for this particular billboard, you're able to do.
We'll go three.
Sounds like a motion.
How about a three-week review?
Okay, well, I'll do, I'll do a little better than that. If there's no further discussion, I would make a recommendation regarding the required one-year review of 24332, that it be approved subject to all staff conditions with the modification that it be reviewed again in three years rather than the five.
Are there any other questions or comments? Please cast your vote. And that is approved, and that will go on to City Council on 11/27, or 21, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Item 50, SUP 24482, special use permit, public hearing, applicant Craig McCall, owner William A. Waldman et al., request for special use permit for a proposed pawn shop and a waiver to allow a distance separation of 244 feet from another financial institution specified use where 1,000 feet is the minimum required, or minimum separation required at 212 Las Vegas Boulevard South.
Staff finds no justification for a waiver of the separation standards and recommends denial of this request.
Good evening.
Good evening. Marion Perry, 300 South Fourth Street, representing the applicant. And this, as you know, is a request for a special use permit for a pawn shop, and pawn shops, as you're probably also aware...
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, I have some great pictures I was going to share with you, but pawn shop licenses are limited by population, so when Mr. McCall decided that he was interested in expanding his business, the way to do it was to go purchase a chain of pawn shops that were already existing, and his goal was to upgrade those shops to something that are a little more attractive. The existing store that, that he has and that he's looking to relocate, you probably will recognize here, it's the, you probably drive by it a lot, but it's the blue oval sign that's just to the, let's see, I'm not always great with my direction, southwest of where we are right now. At this location, there was not an opportunity to enter into a long-term lease that would facilitate the ability to invest the money that he would like to to make this shop up to the standards of some of his other stores. to the standards of some of his other stores. In order to remedy this, he proposes to purchase and renovate a building at 212 South Las Vegas Boulevard to both relocate the Fourth Street store and to move his corporate offices. This is one of the photos that was included. Pardon me. Keep going? Oh, okay, I didn't want to interrupt you. And convert, he'd convert the top floor of this building into offices and have the bottom floor as his relocated shop and some storage area. As you can tell, this building needs, needs some work, lots of work. That's actually another photo, just taken from a different, a little bit different standpoint, but I want to put it there because we have talked, we've done some work looking at ways to upgrade it. We actually had a meeting with Councilman, or Mayor Protem Reese, to discuss what type of facade would be the best. He preferred this one, which I'll just put next to it, well, I'll put it on top of it. And you can see it dresses it up quite a bit, makes it, gets rid of some of the graffiti, the broken windows, the boarded-up areas. And it's going to be a very significant, significant investment. Also, this area provides parking, which the existing store does not. Right now, there's only a 10-foot, or a 10-minute, I believe, pullout parking area that serves both the Fourth Street shop as well as the Thai restaurant that's right next to it. As indicated in staff's report, their primary concern and their reasoning for their recommendation of denial is the need for the waiver of the 1,000-foot separation requirement. I know you have this in your, in your backup, but I just wanted to blow it up here. And note that this is a relocation of an existing business within the same 1,000-foot separation area. It would move from, it's this, there's three dots there because due to the changes that the legislature has made recently, there's a need for more categories of licenses at a single location, but this location would move to right here. It would still be within the same 1,000-foot radius, it would just have a whole lot of money put into it to make it look better. Also, it is not an additional license to be, it's, it's a relocation. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. My client is here with questions about that as well. We've, we've just discussed in the audience, the, the staff, if-approved condition about signage, and my client is a big fan of downtown development. If there is a way to make the signage such that staff and the City Council feel it, it's, it works in the area, which I know neon is, is big right now, and everyone's working on making a cohesive area of cool signage, we'd be happy to work on that as well.
Thank you. This was advertised at a public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak on this item, please come forward. Well, come on down, there's two microphones.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I think counsel passes muster with Councilman Reese, it certainly gets my support. Councilman Reese goes out of his way to make things nice and our, our word. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, it's been one year since my last report. I apologize to the.
Go ahead, your name and address.
My name is Vincent James Walter Watley IV. Thank you, Secretary Watley, for this time to speak in the public, public hearing. I apologize for the delay. It's been one year since my last appearance here, but I'll go last. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing no one in closed public hearing, Commissioners, comments? Commissioner Steinman, or Trobridge?
I am persuaded by the fact that there's no net gain in the number of financial institutions in the area, also that they're going to be making major improvements to what has been a often vacant piece of property. I appreciate the applicant's willingness to get involved in the aesthetics of the project and to help out with some creative signage, and so this request is going to see my support when the time comes.
Commissioner Evans?
I understand the, the story in the community is, Mr. McCall, you're the best operator of these kinds of businesses, pawn shops and payday loan. Everybody says that as, as these financial institutions specified goes, that you're the, you're the greatest operator out there, and very respectful of the statutes, and I've been told, actually worked, I think, with Speaker Buckley in, in some of the new legislation that protects consumers to a better degree. But, the issue I think that we have to look at is, one, the special use permit goes with the land. You can always sell the pawn shop to somebody else who may not have your, your ethics and moral values. Beyond that, I'm looking at the staff report, and I think everybody would agree it's somewhat of a dilapidated building. It could use an infusion of, of money. A business would be well-served there. But, I'm so irritated that in my ward, all the applications seem to be pawn shops and massage parlors and, and payday loans and businesses that I don't think do a great deal for the other surrounding businesses in terms of contributing to the vibrancy of the economy. But, I'm looking at the staff report, and it essentially says that, as a proposed pawn shop use has been determined to contribute to a saturation of a restricted use, this proposal does not reinforce the viability of the downtown area. Therefore, staff recommends denial. That's based on the downtown centennial plan. The redevelopment plan area, this proposal is determined not to be in conformance with the general plan and thus an incompatible use. As such, this pawn shop use proposal is not permitted within the redevelopment area. And then it talks about the downtown overlay district, and essentially says that it's a saturation of use, staff recommends denial. And then the live-work overlay district, it essentially says the same thing, because the pawn shop use exceeds the extent of the live-work overlay district, staff recommends denial. So, we've got the downtown centennial plan, the redevelopment plan, the downtown overlay district, and the live-work overlay district, not to mention the scenic byways, et cetera. You may run a great business, but again, we grant a special use permit, and at some point, you can sell it, and someone may be in there who doesn't. Whether or not one agrees or disagrees with pawn shops, it's perception, and we have denied a number of them based on, to some degree, the perception in the redevelopment area. This is a redevelopment area. We're dying for businesses to come in there. I don't see how that would encourage additional businesses. And I can appreciate that you met with the councilman, and I'm sure that he'll make a fine decision, but I don't think it's fair to characterize that, or infer that through Mr. Farlow or whomever, that not having gone through the public process, that the Mayor Protem will be supporting this project at this point. He may make that determination, but I don't think he's making it here. Wait till the, till the thing has gone through the public system. So, I can appreciate that, you know, you gave him that information, and I'm, you know, he's a man of a great degree of integrity, but I don't think it's fair to make a characterization that essentially he's supporting this, at this juncture. He may support it at some point in time, but I don't think it's fair to characterize his vote here tonight. So, I, this will not seem my support for those reasons. The staff has made a very compelling argument against this. You can have a pawn shop in lots of places in this community, but this is not a good place for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Briefly, you know, I'm, I'm somewhat passionate about downtown, but I'm, I'm actually in a little more relaxed mood than Mr. Evans this evening. But, it's not a reflection on, on Mr. McCall, because to me, if this is truly a net gain, we trade one license and it closes simultaneously with opening this, and nothing, and we don't see one on the backside of that, then in theory, we haven't created any greater intensity or density. But, in, in that regard, I don't have a problem supporting the use. We are in the scenic byway, we're in all of this thing, and I guess any business can, can architecturally, you know, fall within that. And this building has been vacant longer than, I mean, my office was across the street from this for over 10 years, and I think there was somebody in there once, in that, you know, at the very beginning of that period of time. So, it's, it's not a glowing idea of redevelopment. But, here's what happens downtown, and this is my, my five minutes against some of what's going on, is we don't have large enough parcels because of the ownership and some of the history in downtown, and the way they're, the way they were sold and resold and the estates, and this, this probably sit like this because it's been owned by an estate that has not been motivated to do anything for many years. And while we struggle for the last 20 years to get out of our own way downtown, we, I mean, we've absolutely stumbled over ourselves at times. You go south of Sahara, and we have, this community has invested billions, I mean, 20, 30, 40 billion dollars in assets that are in the county, and we stay in the downtown living with the problems that nobody seems to want to just say, stop everything, let's get a handle on this. The mayor's done a phenomenal job of promoting downtown, but we have zoning entitlements, and they all roll over each other, nothing gets done. And we're here 20 years later, this building's sitting here, and the only viable solution, and I don't disagree with your business model, but the only viable solution that, that seems to rise to the occasion, is the relocation of a pawn shop, when, as a, as a piece of property downtown, collectively the block, has so much greater potential for downtown. And we, we've done a lot to, to deal with our master plan and all of these other things, but we just seem to be, and you know, probably are getting a lot of trouble for this, we seem to be doing more to support the south end of the strip than we are to support in downtown by our decisions on some of the short-term decisions downtown. That being said, it's a net change. That I don't have a problem with, and, you know, the idea that some investment's better than no investment, that isn't the right answer. But, I'd, I'd like to find a way to support this application, but this is in the center of the block. It's, it just means we're going to make another 10, 15-year decision that we aren't going to make changes downtown in, in some of these sections. And that, that is a problem that I can't get past. Commissioner Trobridge, Steinman?
I'll let you up. Can I have a comment?
I first wanted to just say that actually, I apologize if my, if, if I made it sound as though he, the Mayor Protem said at this point, gave a, gave a commitment to his vote, because I was definitely not representing that. All I was trying to say is, when we talked to him about elevations, we actually have a little star here from the one that he picked that he thought was the most appropriate for the area, and that's the representation that I would make.
He selected the art.
We put some pictures in front of him showing him what, what we would propose to do, and because we needed to put a proposable for you, that was the one he preferred. I, I would like to, it sounds like, it sounds like a motion is at hand, but I would like to just echo some of the words that Commissioner Dunham shared with us earlier, that we do have an area where it appears there have been some attempts to assemble this block, where they have not been successful. If developers had felt it were viable to do that, it probably would have happened, and it probably would have happened in the last few years when that was the big boom and when some great things happened and were approved in downtown and have since fizzled out. The bank building that is right here has recently gone through some renovations. They are, they look, their building is much more beautiful than it was. I've been looking at it out my window for five years, and it looks a lot better. They've apparently determined that investment in the building that's there to upgrade it is a good idea, which says to me that, that may be the way this block is going, that it's going to be more piecemeal until someone feels that it's worth it, and it hasn't been so far. I, like I said, I would like to echo Commissioner Dunham's words, that you have an applicant here who will commit to close that, so you won't have the net gain. You also have an applicant here who has demonstrated a desire to work in a neighborhood. We have, we do have an issue. I mean, he's been dealing with the perception that pawn shops are bad. Unfortunately, it comes up in every neighborhood. It's an existing use that we'd like to move, that we'd like to upgrade, and one of the things that we were just discussing in the audience, and one of the things that I think as I walk through Fremont Street, is that sometimes that's kind of a tourist attraction, that people are interested in walking in and seeing about, you know, the things that, that are in the pawn shops. It's, it, it's a, it's something that the foot traffic really, really enjoys. And you have an operator here who's willing to commit to work within the scenic byway standards, to have the signage in neon, to make it, if we want to make it, a downtown location, hip, cool, fun. We're happy to work to do that because Craig likes to do that in neighborhoods.
I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think you're mandated to do some of that.
And we're happy to.
It's not an entirely volunteer thing, but I just, just real quickly, and I know we want to move this forward, I do appreciate your, your comments. It's just that, last night, I was at an opening of a law office at the Hughes Center, and I'm talking to some people, they have these beautiful high-rise offices and all these attorneys and, and all the support staff, and they have places to go to lunch, and places to have coffee, and retail, and residential. And, and I'm talking about downtown, downtown, downtown. And they said, we don't want to go down there because of the pawn shops and the perceptions of a seedy operation. And I said, well, that, that can change. And they said, well, you know, prove it. And that's what I'm trying to do. I want to see the downtown become a vibrant area. And it's not that I'm against your business, because as I said, I'm told you run the best business in town. But, will it enhance our redevelopment efforts for downtown? In my opinion, no. The idea that you can't have a building that can't be rehabbed for anything other than a business that has a perception that it's going to move away, other businesses we're trying to attract, rings hollow. Thank you.
Go ahead.
My law firm recently determined that moving to the Hughes Center was not a good idea, and that putting in a lot of money to stay downtown was a very good idea. I'm excited about that.
I applaud you. Thank you.
I'm, I'm sure my client has a few things he'd like to say.
30 seconds. Craig McCall, 301 Valley View. I appreciate the comments that all of you made this evening, and obviously, I, I get sensitive to pawn shops, the pawn shop, the pawn shop. That's exactly what I'm trying to do the opposite of. And I, I wouldn't even want to stay downtown if, for two reasons. One is, I'm a believer in downtown redevelopment, and secondly, the store has been very successful from a retail standpoint with, with tourists. Best store of my 14-store chain from retail sales. Tourists enjoy coming to the store, and what I want to do is make it a more exciting, more pleasant retail experience. And I think that, and I'm willing to spend the money to do that, and it's something that I want to be a part of. I don't want to be associated with the pawn shops that I think that you, a lot of people have the stigma associated with. That's not what I want to do, and I'm willing to work with staff or commitments that, I mean, whatever you all want to do for downtown, probably the same thing I want to do for my store. And keep in mind also that the upstairs is, is going to be for offices. I'm only going to use probably about half the office space, so I'm going to need to lease out the other half of the office spaces. And in order to attract people to have their office, professional people upstairs, I have to make a, a nice environment downstairs. So, I, it, it serves me and it serves the city well to take this dilapidated building and make it a nice building that people will want to rent space from. Thank you.
You know, it's just for, I don't know what it's worth, but just my observation is that I think that the industry is marketing itself in a very negative fashion, and if it was being presented tonight as someone wanted to open a jewelry store downtown, we would jump on the opportunity. And, and the way most jewelry stores operate, if you really look at the amount of square footage dedicated to different elements of the business, there's a lot of used merchandise being sold in jewelry stores. So, maybe it's a spin that we need to work on.
They do require second-hand dealers' licenses that have.
Of course.
That are very similar to what he does.
But, the license, the license does specify the uniqueness of it.
But, it's worth a, a far, a large, large majority of the revenue is, is from retail jewelry sales, total revenue. A far, a large majority of the revenue is from retail jewelry sales, total revenue.
Go ahead and have a motion.
So I'm willing to jump out there and make a motion in regards to item number fifty, special use permit twenty-four, four-eight-two, to approve the request of his staff conditions.
Before we, I'd like you to consider part of your motion, just so we wind up with that net, if this is approved and the applicant seems to be in agreement, that the existing location you have is by business license, because as I understand it, it predates the S U P. So I think if we want this motion to have some commitment to us as an S U P, if we could agree to expunge that business license at that location, is that correct?
Well, it really wouldn't be the license, because the license goes with the operator, doesn't necessarily go with the property. I was thinking something like this, and Margot, you can probably correct me, something like the right to operate a financial institution specified shall be expunged immediately upon the C of O being issued to operate S U P two-four-four-eight-two at two-twelve South Las Vegas Boulevard. Something to that effect, but-
The only comment I would make is that I believe this is a use permit for a pawn shop rather than a financial institution specified, although the distance restriction, it does include both, but it's a greater bubble.
If we can maybe-
What you're editing is exactly what should happen, what would happen.
I would hate to see anybody that may be looking at this, a landlord who is letting you go out of this location, get excited thinking they're going to run down here and get an S U P for a pawn shop at that location. I don't think they're going to get a lot of exciting support at the city.
They wouldn't be able to get a license.
And one thing I would like to add is the old address. I don't know the old address that they're moving from.
One-nineteen Fourth Street.
One-nineteen North Fourth Street.
If I may, the issue would be that while the other location does not have an S U P because it predates the requirements, for them to simply give up the business license at that location would still allow another use to go in, another same use to go in for a hundred and eighty days. So in order to eliminate the other pawn use at the other location, and Mr. Scott, I look to you, they would have to not only give up the other business license, but really retain it for a period of six months non-operationally so that it would then expire at that location.
I don't think they can put a pawn store there because the license are limited by population, so somebody had to move their existing store.
Well, that's a state requirement. I can only speak to the city.
The city requirement.
Oh, under Title VI?
Yeah, so the city would have to approve someone else moving their license in that location.
Okay, so then it may well-
And like I said, giving up his license, he's just moving his license to a new location, so he wouldn't want to give it up. He would just want to give up the right to operate a pawn shop at that one-nineteen North Fourth Street location.
So in theory, anybody-
Well, it would be the business license at that location for the land use license as opposed to the privileged license, which is the business license. So for us, it's the land use business license at that location.
So in theory, one of your competitors would have to drag another license or you would have to transfer another license.
Correct.
Right.
And you're committing not to do that, right?
Absolutely.
And just for clarification on the motion, the S U P for the, how does it read? The special use permit for a pawn shop. By right, as an umbrella, you're allowed then also to do car title loans and payday loans at that location, correct?
We've always agreed to have that, I think the term that we've used on the other ones you've approved is that a majority of the business cannot be those other-
But you have a legal right to do that there, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
With the appropriate state licenses.
Yeah, with the state licenses.
Mr. Chairman, and we can clean up the language in between now and city council.
Okay. I just want to make sure that the applicant, the applicant's attorney are all on board, nobody has a lapse here because-
Absolutely, that one closes.
Yeah, my concern with the motion is that there's no net gain in the number of these operations within the thousand-foot radius of this location.
And while I am vehemently opposed to some of the things that happen, and I think development downtown is critically important, I do agree that the net gain is a positive. I do agree improving that building is paramount to at least making an attempt downtown, and in that regard.
And I guess just for the clerk's purpose, she's about to hand me a note right now. Maybe we can say something like this, the right to operate a pawn shop at one-nineteen North Fourth Street shall be immediately expunged upon the issuance of a C of O being issued to operate a pawn shop at two-twelve South Las Vegas Boulevard, S U P two-four-four-eight-two.
If I would just, there would only be a T I, a tenant improvement here, so they don't issue a C of O, so we could just say the business license becoming operational.
That's fine.
Mr. Chairman, it's going to be a C of C.
Okay.
A C of C would also cover that. That's a certificate of completion.
Completion, right, not C of O, okay.
Thank you. There is a motion for approval if Commissioner Troy Brage agrees to the-
We're accepting all the conditions, they're going to be worded between now and the city council meeting. Very good.
Please cast your vote.
And that passing goes forward to city council on November twenty-first.
Item fifty-one, S U P two-four-four-nine-three, special use permit, public hearing, applicant owner, KHJ Property Holdings LLC, requests for special use permit for a proposed restaurant with service bar at two-thousand-twenty-five Village Center Circle.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Hyeong Ching Kim, eleven-twenty-four Carlton with Ranch Court.
We'd like them to go first.
Sure.
Thank you.
This request meets the separation standards and is appropriately located in the shopping center. Staff recommends approval.
Hi. Actually, I'm here on behalf of the applicant back there. And the applicant purchased a new building, which is, the land area is about point-six-two acres, and the building is about six thousand, four thousand seventy-five square foot. The applicant is currently running a Korean restaurant over at the Springmont and that, what is that, the street name, but the Chinatown. And then she always wanted to have an upscale Korean restaurant or Asian restaurant, which can be located in the premium location and serve the neighborhood with the best food and best service. And then the building itself, it has been unoccupied for the last two years, and then the previous owner was, the tenant was the Black Angus Steakhouse. Yes, and then at the time, they also had a supper club license. And then the applicant looked around the town and finally found that place, and we thought that's the best place for a new Korean restaurant, actually Korean-Japanese restaurant. And then for me, for us, this is a big asset to the neighborhood since, you know, the building has been unoccupied for the last two years, and it doesn't do anything, good things to the neighborhood. But now, by having the upscale Korean and Japanese restaurant, the neighborhoods like attorney's offices and dentist and doctor's offices, all people would be glad to have a good service and good food. And the other things, like the applicant is, you know, investing a lot of money for the garden works right now. So that means that'll be another attractive, you know, place for that neighborhood. So this is a win-win situation, so we respectfully request a special use permit for a restaurant with service bar. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and we wish to speak on this item. Please come forward. Saying no in closed public hearing, Commissioner Evans.
If there's no discussion, I believe this is an incidental use that would provide no detriment to the public, and if anything, it would be an enhancement for your business. So my motion would be to follow the recommendation of our staff for approval.
Thank you very much.
One question, I have one question before we vote. The exterior aesthetics of this building are going to continue to match the office project which it sits in, right?
Yes.
I mean, you're not making exterior changes to the building?
Not dramatically, as long as the law, the code permits. We are, you know, actually, the constructor is under the permission, I mean, under the discussion with the planning department to match the neighborhood, and it can't be totally different from the environment at all. So there should be no problem at all, I believe.
And Mr. Chairman, this is also dictated by the Summerlin Architectural Design Review Committee, which ensures that all of the items are compatible before it comes to city.
Yes, this building is located inside of a planned community.
Oh, I know the building incredibly well.
We know it well.
I just want to at least go on record that I think you have a great opportunity to do a great restaurant, but-
Thank you very much, sir.
I would not want this to be an aberration in this area architecturally.
Of course not.
Okay. Is there any other comments? There's a motion for approval. Please cast your vote. And that is approved, that will go to city council on November twenty-first.
Thank you very much.
Item fifty-two, S U P two-four-five-one-three, special use permit, public hearing, applicant owner, Iconium Corporation LLC, requests for special use for a facility to provide testing, treatment, and counseling for a drug and alcohol abuse at thirteen-eleven South Casino Center Boulevard. I am going to abstain on this item as much as I do own property within the notice area.
Can we get a presentation for the staff? Our acting chairman, Evans. Staff finds that this use is not compatible with the abutting residential land uses in this area and is recommending denial. Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant?
Yes, good evening, commissioners. My name is Tony Seles. Address is thirty-eight-hundred Howard Hughes Parkway. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Las Vegas Family Clinic. I'd like to first start off and spend a few minutes with you discussing some of the background, giving you some information about the background of the applicant. The applicant has been operating outpatient treatment facilities in the Las Vegas Valley since nineteen ninety-two. The applicant currently operates seventeen facilities nationwide, including four in the Las Vegas area. Of the four facilities, the applicant is currently operating at the seven-twenty-one East Charleston location. As you can see, I've identified it as the site on the arrow here, it's generally located off Charleston and Eighth Street. They have, the Las Vegas Family Clinic has been operating there for almost nearly a decade. We have done some research ourselves to see if there's been any code violations or any complaints. As far as we could tell from our research, there's been no code violations, no complaints. In fact, their current landlord, the Nevada Legal Services, has said that they, in fact, are a very good tenant and, in fact, have provided us a letter here, which I would like to submit for the record, and have made enough copies to pass out to the members of the commission. So I guess that leads to the question, why are we here? Well, unfortunately, Nevada Legal Services is going through renovation and expanding their services, and as a result of that, are terminating, unfortunately terminating our client's lease. So with that being said, we are now looking, we have to go elsewhere and look for a new location. The client, Las Vegas Family Clinic, is very desirous of continuing to provide this type of use to this area, this neighborhood. As I mentioned before, there are a total of four, so if you can imagine, the city is broken, or the Las Vegas Valley is broken up into quadrants, and would like to still provide this service in this area. So as a result, we are requesting to move to, I'll display it here, the thirteen-eleven Casino Center Drive, as I've labeled here, the site. The outpatient treatment facility is suitable at thirteen-eleven Casino Center location because it is Zone C-two, and when you have a C-two zone, it does permit this type of use in conjunction with a special use permit. I want to highlight a couple of important functions of the facility and hopefully dispel any misconceptions that may be out there. One, patients do not reside or stay overnight. Rather, patients generally make appointments with the on-premise physician and/or counselors. Second, the hours of operation will be limited to Monday through Saturday, five a.m. to two p.m., as well as five p.m. to seven p.m. Monday through Friday. And the Monday through Friday, five to seven p.m. is going to be more for group-type therapies such as Alcohol Anonymous or Gamblers Anonymous or some type of family sessions. The second clarification I would like to make, that this is not a dual-diagnosis facility. An example of a dual-diagnosis facility would be something where patients have substance abuse and mental health issues. I want to clarify that this is not that type of operation. This is, this rather only treats adults battling drug or alcohol abuse. Third, and I think another very important factor for you to consider for approval, is that this is a for-profit operation that primarily caters to patients seeking voluntary treatment and that they pay for these services out of their own pocket. So basically, what does that mean? What type of profile or what type of clientele are you looking at bringing in here? These are people that generally have jobs, and I think that shows by the hours of operation that we're going for. It's from five a.m. to two p.m., trying to catch those that are either getting off work, those going to work, those coming during their lunch break. Second, these are people paying, because they have jobs, they are paying for this out of their pocket, and these are people that are motivated, that are voluntarily seeking this type of treatment themselves. As you can imagine, this is a heavily regulated industry and that the applicant holds numerous state and federal licenses and certificates. I'd like to go ahead and, I believe these are in your backup, but I would like to just demonstrate for the public all the licensing and regulations that Las Vegas Family Clinic does have. Here, they are certified by the Nevada State Board of Pharmacy. They're also certified by the State of Nevada Health Division Bureau of Alcohol and Drug They're also certified by the Department of Health and Human Services. They also, from a federal level, have registered with the DEA, the Department of, or yeah, the DEA. They also have a Nevada State Business License, and they also are licensed by the City of Las Vegas. And as I mentioned, this all should be in your backup for you to refer to. I guess in reviewing staff's report, the one concern that they have pointed out is that the site is adjacent to residential use. I think as you can see, this area, there's a lot of color on this map, a lot of red and a lot of blue, and those colors indicate commercial and light manufacturing uses. This is a neighborhood that is being revitalized and is in a transition of going from residential to that commercial light or light industrial. And I think we're keeping in touch or in theme with that vision. Also, because as I mentioned, this is an area that is being revitalized, our client, the applicant, Las Vegas Family Clinic, wants to be part of this community, wants to go keep this area revitalized, and as a result, has agreed or is willing to, as you can see that's now being showed on your picture, remove the wrought iron fence. There is also a sign pole there, they are willing to, they were willing to remove that. They also have began to spruce up the landscaping, provided water services back to bring the landscaping alive. And as well as you can see, the building is a little bit dull, and at this point, they are going to or planning on providing some pop-outs around the windows and provide some exterior aesthetic amenities to try to make it a little bit more pleasing and to try to be part of this community that is revitalizing the area. Essentially, in conclusion, the outpatient facility has proven to be an important part of the community, medical resources, and in the event this is not granted, this is going to leave somewhat of a void in the neighborhood or in this community. And with all that being said, I do respectfully request your approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public want to speak? Please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Parlow, two-forty North Eighteenth Street. The applicant mentioned that the customers here pay for their own thing. Well, that's probably true, but they're ordered to do so by a judge usually. This is off of a major bus route. These guys have been picked up for traffic fines, they've probably lost their driver's license. But even more, this neighborhood between the stratos- But even more, this neighborhood between the Stratosphere and downtown, we need some real stuff. I mean, the applicant talks about pop-out windows and stuff, this place, I mean, we need bulldozers down there and we need a fresh start. But this is just the wrong thing to do at this place. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Phil Bericchio, 1320 South Casino Center. My office is located right across the street. I am an owner of the building. I've worked downtown since 1980. I'm an attorney, I've partnered with John Muji, we've partnered over 20 years. What's amazing is downtown has sat for many years and it's only within the last few years that we start to see just a spark. But we see real money too. We see condominiums like the Soho Lofts and the Newport Lofts. People are expected to come in and spend an excess of a half a million dollars for those lofts. We talked earlier about the need to have walking distance grocery stores, walking distance, pedestrian traffic for what their needs are. Where are these people going to go? So the question is, we have no sooner cleaned out the downtown area than what are we doing? We are bringing now drug users for treatment back to downtown. A pawn shop is still a pawn shop. A drug rehab place is still a drug rehab. How on earth are you ever going to motivate moneyed investors to come back downtown when the only business they're going to see are these type of businesses? This is an appropriate business next to UMC Hospital, near other doctor, medical facilities. You're dissuading. I think one of the Commissioners stated earlier that you're doing a great job at pressing the investment south of Sahara and that's exactly what's happening. Until such time as someone says, no, we're not going to have a drug rehab business downtown, we've just cleaned that out. I mean, what you've cleaned out downtown is transient housing, low-priced housing, you've made the neighborhood safer. It has become safer in five years. You know, Casino Center is this golden boulevard. If you walk out in the morning, it's a wide boulevard that in the midst of this whole city just begs for real development, not a drug rehab business. It begs for real development. And how is it that this block, there is no other block like this between Charleston on the north end and Wyoming on the south end. There's no other street that is just a fertile plot of land awaiting a major development. You have major investment at the Stratosphere, there have been the 72 parcel that is on the west side of Main Street, you have Tenoco's which has struggled and is finally coming along. We need real businesses that are not the stereotypical businesses that go along with downtown. I would ask also on behalf of Oswaldo Fumo, who is at 1212 Casino Center, he's moved his office there, his law office, and we have plans to renovate and to improve the building site, but I can tell you that if we're going to be facing, you know, parade of drug addicts across the street, albeit they may need treatment, it's certainly not compatible with the quote downtown redevelopment area. So, you know, you had the children here earlier, I mean, is this the area that you want your kids to live? If I'm going to live in Soho or Newport, do I want my kids walking to the grocery store when they're facing this type of business? Would request that the special use permit be denied. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I won't be before you very long. My name is Vincent James Walter Wiley IV. I live at 1301 Sunset Road, Henderson, Nevada 89114. Although I have filed a motion in court as a preemptive strike as retaliation to their inappropriate advance towards me without the consent of prosecution. I think Secretary Watley's...
Is this in regards to item number 52?
Yes, in regards to item number 15.
We're on 52 right now.
Yeah, I thought this was the public comment.
No, no, that's not till the conclusion of the meeting. Item number 52. You're about 10 minutes early.
Oh, okay, alright.
Hopefully.
My name's Brent Massman. It's my family that owns this business and owns the property and I want to just clear up a couple of things.
So you're the applicant?
I am the applicant.
This is your client?
Correct.
Let's make sure there's no one else from the public who's here to speak for or against us. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and...
If I could, this is Brent Massman. He is the owner, he is the applicant of Las Vegas Family Clinic. Has been, he and his family have been in this business for 15 to 20 years. Him personally, 15 years, I believe his sister and brother-in-law a greater time. I think he wants to just dispel some of these rumors. I heard, you know, the typical, the stereotype use. Well, they are stereotyping what they think this is. If you have not been there and seen it, this is really benign. It looks like a doctor's office, has the feel of a doctor's office. The hours of operation are from 5:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It caters to, not to the indigent, but the working people, people who have jobs every day, who need this type of service. And I'll turn it over to my client, Mr. Massman, and he will further elaborate.
Alright. Thank you. And that's correct. We looked for two years for a new location to move from 721 East Charleston. We looked next to UMC, we looked at a number of different places and continued to come up against a variety of issues. We settled on this location because we felt it had the surroundings and the potential to do what we do and that is treat people who are voluntarily looking for treatment. They're not lining up outside, they're not wandering the streets. Eighty percent of the people that we treat are working people from the community that we are now located in and from the community that this clinic is going to be located in. They're not driving from Wyoming or even North Las Vegas. These are folks that live and work in the community in which we're located. We have other locations around the city that serve as communities in those other areas. This facility treats people who are from the downtown area, not downtown, but this area that we're located in. It's a nice space and it will be finished very, very nicely. And I know that a couple of you, including Commissioner Steinman, have visited our locations and they're very, very clean, very, very nice. We do not get federal or state funding, so the patients that we treat, again, are private patients and they're not indigents traveling long distances for treatment and primarily it is by appointment. So you won't get people coming into the area or going out on the street or that kind of thing. So I just, I wanted to clarify a couple of those things.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
I will state that I did visit the location, their location in North Las Vegas and I spent a good bit of time there and questioned Mr. Massman at length. I think I gave him pretty good questions today.
You did.
About your operation. And I too was concerned about the stereotyping of this kind of business. And let me assure you that where they're located now, in a brand-new office complex in North Las Vegas along Cheyenne, is far from what one would expect that kind of location to be if you're going to stereotype. The location is, you wouldn't even know what is involved by the name on the door. And there is a name on the door and that is it. It doesn't say drug rehab or anything of that nature. I asked him about his funding, which he's just mentioned, and other than maybe a few, which he admitted to me Medicaid patients, very few, the money is private and they do not even acquire reimbursement from insurance companies. That is up to the patient themselves to do. And that the majority of their patients are in fact working and why do they start at 5:00 in the morning? Because some of the people are coming off a 4:00 a.m. shift and some are just going to a 6:00 a.m. shift and they like to do this in the anonymous situation and go in and come out. They are scheduled there by appointment, so they do not have a waiting area of 45 chairs and all that that we envision in this kind of a situation. I felt very comfortable when I left this operation today because Mr. Massman, I believe, honestly answered all my questions and I don't think this will do anything to make this a bad neighborhood on Casino Center Drive. I don't think in any way it will do that. So I just wanted the other members of the commission to know that I had met today and observed their operation.
Commissioner Crowbridge, did you have something? Yes, I believe I heard the initial presentation was that the adjoining parcel, which is currently residential, has been purchased by the owners of this facility. And what are the intentions regarding that particular parcel?
Yes, Commissioner, the parcel directly to the south of the site was recently, I believe escrow closed on Tuesday afternoon and now Mr. Massman is the owner of that parcel. The intentions are to come back before you in the near future with a zone change and that would be really a parking lot there that they envisioned to help accommodate any parking issues that sometimes confront the downtown area.
So at any rate, it's not going to be continued as residential?
That is correct.
Okay. You know, I think we're hearing some comments, perhaps, we talk about stereotyping or whatever, but it's some of this not in my backyard thinking. I think that the structure that's there now with the wrought iron fence in the wall definitely create a prison-like look and I think that the architectural changes that you've committed to make would be a plus to the neighborhood, you know? And I just want to say that and that's weighing heavily on my mind before I make up my mind. It's, we've had a couple of the items that come before us this evening that are along the same way, you know? It may not be the exact business we want, but it's certainly a step in the right direction. You know, it can't all be cute little boutiques and, you know, whatever in the world everybody thinks is preferable, you know? I'm not sure, but I think that there's lawyers offices in town that have accused murderers and rapists and bank robbers and drug dealers that are in and out of their offices all the time. They call them clients, just like you call your people clients. And so let's don't get too ugly about calling people clients, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? I, I, I struggle with these because I too, like Commissioner Crowbridge, I believe that these people are wounded and communities like ours, like all communities, need to step up to the plate and help people who want to help themselves. Drug addiction is rampant. I don't know what kind of drug treatment, what kind of drug addicts you treat, whether it's, you know, people who have meth problems or heroin addictions or whatever, but I'm assuming they had to reach a bottom to get to you because unless they're ordered by the court, most people, that's where they come from is the bottom. The party's over for them. So in that regard, you know, I really applaud the fact that, you know, you're doing something to assist people. As a community, we spend a lot of time beating you guys up who want to create these facilities and yet the option is to allow people out on the street without treatment, to allow drug addicts out there living that nightmare life that they live that affects all of us. But having said that, I think this is the absolute wrong location for it, the absolute wrong location. I met with Mr. Celeste and full disclosure, and the other attorneys from his firm, and basically I said, you will probably not see my support on this item. I think there are, in the downtown area that you speak of, a number of strip malls that would be somewhat more ideal than this location. I've always believed that there is no such thing as an ideal location for a drug treatment testing and counseling facility. But I think there are places that are less egregious than others and I can think of a hundred that would be better than this place. I'm not sure why you were committed to this particular location, particularly knowing what's going on there. It does affect the other people. Veronica Holmes-Litwick has basically spent her life savings to buy that little block of the little boutique, the antique village along there. They put every penny they have into that. Across the street diagonally is the Funk House, Cindy Funk House, same thing. She bought a building when no one was coming down there. She has her antique store below it and a live workspace up above. I know across the street, we at this commission, I believe approved an item a year or so ago for what was then to be a high-rise or a mid-rise residential facility. Once again, it hasn't yet materialized, but up and down Casino Center, there have been great opportunities and proposals and there's no doubt in my mind, at one point in time, that will be an exciting, wonderful, vibrant place. But it will never get there as long as we keep putting in facilities like this. And it's not the not in my backyard, it's just that this is, I think, a really poor location for that. And whether it's the reality or the perception, you're in the redevelopment district. This is not, this, you cannot convince me that a, how is it referred to? The actual title is a drug, a facility provide testing, treatment, or counseling for drug or alcohol abuse. How does that encourage redevelopment in the redevelopment district? I just can't see it. So I, and then I had a couple of other questions. The staff report, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it says that you currently operate a clinic at 721 East Charleston and you concurred that that's where you were and you said there were no code violations or any problems, but the staff report says that you've been in that location since April of 2000 without a special use permit. Doesn't this require a special use permit regardless of where you are? I mean, essentially what they're saying is you've been operating illegally for...
Predate.
It predated the...
Okay, yes.
And then secondly, you discuss the various licensure, you know, you talked about the pharmacology and the beta certifications. If I'm not mistaken, those are required in order to run a facility. Like, it's not like you got gravy over on the potatoes, those are things that you must have.
Absolutely, and if I implied that we went above and beyond expectations, I'm sorry for that, but what I'm saying is this is a highly regulated industry and we have those certificates and I just wanted to point that out and make that for the record.
And I can make one, if I can make one just quick correction, that's not necessarily true for all drug and alcohol treatment facilities. We are an accredited location, accredited agency. Now accreditation is something that you don't hear very often when it's associated with outpatient drug and alcohol treatment centers. If you're familiar with hospitals, you've heard the term JACO, J-A-C-H-C-O, Joint Commission on Accreditation. We have that accreditation at our location. You don't find that everywhere and that's a very, very significant step forward in a national accreditation process that we have, that not just everybody has or is required.
That brings me to my next question. In the staff report and in your presentation, you say there are nurse stations available for the staff physician or nurse to administer medication and you talk about the pharmacology licensure. So I'm assuming that there's some administration of medication there. Is that, I'm assuming that's methadone, is that correct?
We have a doctor, a physician, who is on staff and who does work at the clinic a couple of days of work and does see patients there and does prescribe them medications.
Will the methadone...
Not all patients who come there are prescribed medications. Some patients who come there are prescribed medications. Your reference to methadone is correct. We do use that for some patients, not all of them. We also use other medications for patients that require that and are diagnosed with that particular addiction.
Okay. But the fact remains, you're administering, albeit legally, drugs and some, basically you've got a methadone, to some degree, a methadone clinic, at least a portion of your business. I mean, I think we need to be clear about it when it says testing, counseling, treatment, and administration, part of what you're doing is a methadone clinic.
Part of the patients that we are treating, we are treating with methadone. It's not a, I don't know what you're referring to with respect to a methadone clinic. Not all the patients that come there, some of the patients just come there to get assessed. Some patients just come there because they're doing urine tests. Some patients come there with their families to get treatment and have no medication.
I'm not suggesting that everybody is on, is being administered methadone. I just want to be very clear, that is a portion of what you do in the business. Otherwise, you wouldn't need a pharmacology certification, right?
Right.
Okay. I don't know what to say. I mean, I'm so perplexed because I, this is the redevelopment district, this body, the city council, our staff, in the six and a half years I've been here, we're trying to redevelop this area and... here, we're trying to redevelop this area, and I don't see where applications like this do a single thing to advance the vision that everybody seems to abate into, and if anything, it's a substantial detriment. So, I, their recommendation is for denial, and I, again, I am incredibly sympathetic to the need, but I don't understand why you wouldn't look at other locations or anywhere around the medical centers, the medical district, the strip malls off of Highland, and any of the industrial areas where there isn't a problem and where the recommendation would be for approval. I don't get it.
If I could just, I comment, Commissioner Evans, I appreciate your candor with us and your opinion. I guess, two things, and I'm probably not going to sway your opinion, I understand that, but just to point out, one, they did want to go somewhere where they could control their own destiny because they unfortunately have to be, they have to remove because their lease is up. Number two, to the outside public, this is going to look just like a doctor's office or insurance office, something very unassuming, and it's only because we have to, you know, we're going through the public process for this, but I think those are just two, two reasons to at least answer some of your questions on why this location. And I understand we may not, you may not be persuaded by that, but that's at least an attempt to answer your questions.
I'm just one, I'm just one vote.
Yes, thank you.
Anything further from anyone? Maybe we can get a motion here? Anyone else?
I'll make a motion. Item number 52, SUP 24513, move for approval. Subject conditions.
One moment, Mr. Chairman. We need to amend condition number two. It's approved. To read as follow, hours of operation shall be from 5:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, and from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Facility shall be closed on Sundays.
So amended.
As a correction to condition number two.
So amended.
And if I may ask, Commissioner Steinman?
Yes.
The applicant has indicated that their signage will be similar to that in their existing facility, and in that facility, it is only wall signage. I would ask for your consideration of...
Removing the...
A condition that says wall signage only shall be allowed on the site, subject to approval by the planning and development staff, and the freestanding sign on site shall be removed.
That's number four?
I would, yes.
So amended.
And if the applicant...
We agree to that, yes.
Do we have a motion? Everyone cast their vote, post. And that motion does not carry. Do we need a motion in the alternative?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion in the alternative?
I would move for, to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
And that, that motion passes? Ms. Wheeler?
And this is final action, in the absence of an appeal within 10 days to the city clerk's office.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good evening. I'm sorry, item number 53, special use permit, 24529. The applicant is Victor Perio, the owner at 750 Fremont LLC. Request is for a special use permit for a tavern, limited establishment at 760 Fremont Avenue. And item number 54, the companion item, site development review, 24527, site development plan review related to the SUP, same applicant, same owner, same address, and it's for a 43,000 square foot tavern with a nightclub and banquet facility on 0.64 acres at 760 Fremont.
Mr. Chairman...
Can I ask you, staff, is this Fremont Street or Fremont Avenue?
It is street.
Thank you.
Staff finds that the proposed use and site plan are in formance to the entertainment district and the ongoing development in the area, and is recommending approval of this request.
Good evening.
Good evening. Brandon Sprague, 1200 South Forest Street, on behalf of the applicant, and we agree with all staff conditions.
Okay, this was advertised to public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak on the side, please come forward.
Todd Farlow, I just wanted to say those elevations are beautiful.
Anybody else wish to speak on the side? Seeing no one, close public hearing. Commissioners, comments? Commissioner Crowbridge?
There's no questions. I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Motion on item number 53, special use permit, 24529. Recommend to go along with staff's recommendation for approval of the request, subject to all staff conditions.
That is, that will go on to city council on, oh, let's, one more, item 54.
And in regards to item number 54, site development review, 24527, recommend approval of the item, subject to all staff conditions.
Please cast your vote. And that is approved, and both those items will go on to city council on November 21st.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for staying with us tonight.
Item 55, SUP 24533, special use permit, public hearing, applicant Alina Galosna, owner West Sahara Associates, request for special use permit for a secondhand dealer at 6338 West Sahara Avenue.
Staff finds that the, this site is oversaturated with this type of use, and is deemed not compatible with the other uses in the area, and therefore recommends denial.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Joe Briada. I'm representative of Alina. My address is 2600 South Town Center Drive in Las Vegas. Alina is my wife, and she came up the idea of opening up a children's resale clothing store for kids. I feel, I don't understand why it was denied. One year ago, there was another store that it was approved for, but they never executed their business, never went through with their business there, and nothing ever took place. And we felt that we wanted, she wanted to do this, and she went in, and we had approval from Goodwill, who was right next door. At first, they didn't want us there, but we told them that we were going to be doing children's clothing and accessories, strollers, cribs, et cetera. There's a play it against sports there. They sell sporting goods, use sporting goods, and buy sporting goods. And there's a coin shop, it's not a pawn shop. He strictly buys coins. So, there's three businesses, and there was a fourth that was approved, but nothing ever took place there, and that expired, that special use permit expired, I believe, this year, July. So, I'm surprised that it was denied.
You've read all of staff's conditions of approval and are in agreement with them?
Yes, 100%.
Okay. This was advertised to public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak on the side, please come forward. Seeing no one, close public hearing. Commissioner, comments? Commissioner Crowbridge?
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to support the request for the business, but I'm going to have to tell you that I went by there the other day and noticed that the business was up and operating.
We do have a retail license. She has a retail license, so she's selling new clothes and used clothes.
So, she's selling new now?
Then why are we, why are we here tonight then?
Only new right now.
Only new right now.
Okay. Just saw the door open. It said grand opening, and people in there looking. Who knows? But anyway, I said I was going to support it, so in regards to item number 55, if there's no further discussions.
Okay.
Okay. Make a recommendation in regards to special use permit, 24533, for approval of the request, subject to all staff recommendations, with the addition of the one requirement be that we would have a one-year review of the special use permit. Administrative, please.
Okay. If they're, and you're in agreement with all of that?
Yeah.
Okay. There's a motion for approval, subject to staff's conditions with the amended condition. Any other comments? Please cast your vote. And that is approved, and that will go on to city council on November 21st.
Thank you.
Now, we go to that portion of the agenda, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time on any single speaker, may be limited.
Good evening. My name is Vincent James, Walter Walling IV. I live at 1301 Sunset Road, Henderson, Nevada, 89114. Henderson claim has been dismissed due to the investigation. It was determined that he didn't have, he didn't acquire treatment for, he didn't acquire discretionary treatment of the Secretary of the Air Force, respective to Secretary Watley, that's 90 miles north of Las Vegas. I'm here today just in regards, just to show my credentials where I've introduced in the federal registration, I've introduced in the federal registration that reflects dispensation, there are reciprocal functions. And the reason I'm here is because it's one year late. I know it's one year late, but one year ago, I went to my resident address after I put in the, the application for my building plans that I requested of the planning commission, and upon my arrival to my resident address, I was struck down by Henderson. They stole a piece of my identification, they locked me up in jail.
Excuse me, you're talking about something that was a property within Henderson, a location?
Well, Henderson, his claim has been dismissed. He doesn't have the tools that are necessary to complete the job.
Okay, but, I mean, your residence is in Henderson, Nevada?
Yes.
And that's where this...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We have nothing to do with Henderson, of course.
Okay, well, on my state identification, on my state identification, Henderson still has a lawful claim, but what I'm going to have, I have to remove him from my identification. It's a, it's a state issue, so...
And if you would like, you know, we'd be glad to help you get a number for the state and/or the way you could deal with the people that probably actually can handle something for you. We're not in the capacity to do that for you.
Okay, oh, you're not in the capacity...
We don't have the jurisdiction in Henderson or at the state level. We strictly deal with planning within the city of Las Vegas.
Okay, well, there's a Walmart that's right next door, and the application for the secretary's description is only $80. I can get that, I can get that transaction...
But that isn't Henderson.
...through with no problem.
That isn't Henderson, so we can't help you.
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, what about the, well, the secretary is a respectful decline in the, in the backup plan?
I, you know, I can't speak to that, but I'd, like I say, if you'd like, you know, staff will be glad to try and give you a phone number where you can follow up on that.
Okay, I haven't been able to occupy my own residence because I fear for my life, you know, they shot me down.
I think the marshal here can actually probably put you in the right direction on that as well.
Okay, well, I just needed a reputable company. They were condescended when Thurgood Marshall died, and he didn't credit the Board of Education. So, that's what the problems are. They're, they're not crediting education. What seems to be the problem, sir?
That's, that's the amount of time we have, Ben.
Okay.
Mr. Farlow, how have you been?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I would like to address site plan reviews. The American Association of Architects had another lecture on sustainable building at UNLV last Monday, and in regards to your joint session with the city council on that, the lecture there was from Oxford in England, and one of the problems that they are having in England is getting the orientation of the houses right, because we're headed for a train wreck, I mean, just like the fellow told you at the joint meeting. But what's, what's coming online now is the way the Germans are doing it now, where solar panels, they'll use, like Nevada power, they use that as a battery, basically, and the houses themselves will have solar panels to generate their electricity. It is imperative that these houses be orientated in such a way that they can take advantage of the sunlight, and so when they're, I was, if you go out south of Sunset Boulevard and out by the old, the new post office, the central post office, I see like KB Homes, I mean, all these places, they've got like six stories of design studios, and it's just amazing to me why all of these people that are located out there, they have all of these people working for them, and they can't come up with a site plan that, that takes advantage of what's going to happen, what is going to be, what's going to confront us in the near future, and I would certainly hope that we look at that in the future. Thank you very much.
Todd, we're looking at it.
Thank you.
He needs a good architect. Brandon Sprague, Gaptis Architecture, 1200 South Forest. This isn't like me to come up and talk, but just...
Three minutes of free TV time.
My great-grandmother came out here in 1932, and we've been here ever since. We started this business four years ago. One of my big things was to move downtown. We've been here for over three years now. Very proud to be here. We're trying like hell for the last year to find a building, to build an office for us. One of the ones we looked at was the pawn shop we looked at today. We can't afford it. Other people can, which is too bad. And I agree totally with the moral decision just right by our office down on Casino Center. All I want to say is stick to your guns. We're going to find something down here. I mean, I was with one of our big clients today, a developer, he's like, "Go in the county, go in the periphery town, you get it for 40 bucks. We're looking for 85 to 175 downtown." Morally, I still want to be here, and I'm sitting in the back just gung-ho, I want to come up in every item, so stick to your guns. Let's look at it for my children, our grandchildren. We need a downtown here. When I was growing up, we cruised the Fremont Strip, the street, and that's all it was. We need a downtown to be proud of. So, stick to your guns. Hope that helps. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Seeing no one, oh, Director Wheeler wants to speak.
Remind the commission, for November and December, your meeting dates are changed from your usual second and fourth Thursdays. In November, it'll be the second and the fifth. It'll be the eighth and the 29th, because, unless you plan to meet on Thanksgiving. And then, for December, it's moved back a week to the first and third, so it'll be the sixth and the 20th. There's no way to do it without one back-to-back. There just, there just isn't. So, again, November 8th and 29th, December 6th and 20th.
And I have a couple things. Of course, that means between the 11/29 meeting and the 12/6, there can be no abances because the public hearing notices are already posted for the 6th. In addition, I'd like to point out that we did provide to the planning commissioners laptop computers tonight with CD-ROMs on it that have all the backup material for your staff reports and all the maps and everything provided to you for your convenience tonight. Our goal is to see if we can reduce the number of printed copies we make in order to reduce the, our carbon footprint. Please look, try them out, let us know how they are, see how we can accommodate you best.
Commissioner Steinman was on my space all night long.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.